Good evening, everyone. As we are absent a Chair and Vice Chair, the duty falls to the Secretary to call the meeting to order and to preside over the election of a Chair Pro Tem. So I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:12 Eastern. But before we do the election of the Chair Pro Tem, I would just formally do roll call, and then we'll proceed right, right to that election. So I am present. Mr. Redpath?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Bost?
Here.
Mr. Nikala?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Watkins?
Yeah.
Ms. Yana Scavitch? I see you.
She's muted. You're muted.
Yeah, I saw her. Mr. Dar?
Here.
Mr. Dasing?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Hayes?
I'm here.
Mr. Lamb?
Mayor Lamb's here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Nana?
Here.
Mr. Bracco?
Here.
Mr. Chatterton?
Here.
Mr. Hertz?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Malagon?
Present.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Weir?
Here.
Okay, so the next thing would be election of a Chair Pro Tem. I do see Ms. Yana Scavitch's hand raised. Ms. Yana Scavitch? You're muted. Oh, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, I move to appoint Adrian Malagon as Chair Pro Tem.
Second.
For some reason, I'm having... Okay, Ms. Yana Scavitch moved, I'm sorry, because I'm taking minutes at the same time, to appoint Adrian Malagon as Chair Pro Tem. Is there any objection?
Objection.
Okay, we will move to a roll call vote. Until I'm completely relieved of this duty, I'll start sharing my screen once we do have a Chair Pro Tem. So if you give me one moment, I am pulling up a ballot.
Who objected, please?
Mr. Lamb did. Okay, so the motion before the body is whether or not Mr. Malagon shall be appointed Chair Pro Tem, which means for this meeting, up until and if we elect a Chair, a yes vote will appoint Mr. Malagon as Chair Pro Tem, a no vote will not. Mr. Bost?
Could you clarify one more time, please?
If you agree to Mr. Malagon to be Chair Pro Tem for this meeting, this is just dealing with this meeting, you will vote yes. If not, you will vote no.
No.
One moment. Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dasing?
No.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
You're muted.
I will come back to Mr. Ford.
Excuse me, I thought it was an objection. Also, are there other nominations?
I would move to nominate Mr. Redpath for Pro Tem, if it's in order.
It's not in order at this time. We're in the middle of a vote. If the vote fails, then your motion will be in order.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford?
A pass.
Mr. Garcia?
I'll pass.
Since I am acting as Chair right now, I'm going to vote last. Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins? I will come back to Mr. Watkins. Ms. Yana Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Just to clarify, I voted no. It might not have gone through.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Mr. Ford?
I'm still, I haven't decided who I'm voting for, but I'm still trying to understand why.
We are in the middle of the vote, Mr. Ford.
I understand that, and you know what? I'm not going to sit here and obsess over parliamentary procedure. Again, I haven't even decided who I'm voting for yet, but I'm not going to obsess over parliamentary procedure if in fact, there was just this bull rush to close the...
Mr. Ford, we're in the middle, Mr. Ford, you're out of order.
I don't care.
Mr. Ford, you are out of order. Mr. Ford, you're out of order. Anyone could have... Are you going to vote?
I'd like to know why you didn't ask if nominations would be closed.
Mr. Ford, are you going to vote?
I would like to know that.
Mr. Malagon, will you please mute Mr. Ford, and I will get back with him. Mr. Garcia?
Well, because Mr. Redpath voted yes, that was going to be a nomination. I'll just vote yes.
Okay, is Mr. Ford ready to vote? If you could unmute Mr. Ford, Mr. Malagon?
I can only ask him to unmute, but I can't unmute him.
I guess all that bit about process and open meetings and everything was nonsense. I'm a florist.
Mr. Ford, are you going to vote, or I'll put you down as an abstain?
Oh, boy. Wow.
Okay, I'll put you down as an abstain.
What is the vote right now? What is the vote right now?
Okay, it is nine to four.
I'll abstain.
Okay, as my vote is not needed to cause or break a tie, I will also abstain. That is, so there are two abstentions, nine yes, four no. Mr. Malagon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. If the Secretary would be so kind as to put the agenda on the screen.
Okay, one moment, please.
Madam Secretary, may I cede my vote at this time to Mr. Malagon?
I don't decide that. I'm no longer...
I'm sorry, Mr. Malagon.
You're ceding to me right now?
Yes.
Okay.
For some reason, it's not let me share. Let me try. Oh, there it went. Something changed with Zoom since the last time I used it. Okay. The agenda should be up on the screen. We did the call to order and attendance. We did the election of the Chair Pro Tem.
Point of information.
Mr. Thompson had his hand up first. I'm going to call him Mr. Thompson, then Mr. Bost.
Yeah, I'm sorry. As point of personal privilege, I just wanted to point out that we didn't have open nominations, so the motion was in order. I understand past objection there, but the process was respected.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
I have never been in the entire time on my LNC in a situation where there was no...
Mr. Ford, we will not have cross talk. We will not have cross talk during this meeting. Just to capitalize on Mr. Thompson's point here, there was a motion that was made, and someone could have opened nominations. There could have been a process there. That's fine. Ms. Yana Scavitch made a motion. The motion passed. We are past that now. Mr., I'll say Mr. Bost first, and then Mr. Dasing.
Yes, can you clarify with Mr. Malagon as Chair Pro Tem, the status of the vote for Region Four? And if Mr. Malagon also has a vote, what is the status there?
Certainly, Mr. Bost. So a Chair Pro Tem is strictly just procedural. It does not give me a vote any more so than it did when I was Secretary Pro Tem for a few meetings. This is, I do have a vote now as Region Four Representative, since Ms. Hayes has ceded her seat to me at the moment.
Thank you.
Of course. Mr. Dasing? I believe that was probably his question, so he's put his hand down. Mr. Ford? You are muted.
Moving forward, are we going to get at least 30 seconds in between motions to actually respond to them?
I suppose that's up to the motion maker, and if there's a second for it, or if there's a competing...
Or how about if in fact, we're going to nominate for anybody, is there going to be at least a 45 seconds gap in between the rush to close nominations? Or is this the new practice of the Secretary?
That is up to, that is up to the body. The Secretary proceeded as she saw fit, and there was nothing...
We understand that. We understand that. She always sees as she's fit.
Mr. Malagon, I ask that you please call Mr. Ford to order.
Please come to order.
I was muted. I didn't get a chance to speak.
Oh, yes, of course, Mr. Dasing.
I want to appeal the ruling of the Chair.
What ruling would that be? I'm confused.
About there being open nominations.
Who is talking, please?
That's Mr. Dasing. I'm not sure. This is, at this point, the motion has passed. There was no competing motion. There were no nominations. This would be dilatory. Okay, moving on. So if the Secretary would be so kind as to put the agenda back on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
So I believe, so I guess the next item is technically the adoption of the agenda. Everyone has seen the agenda? Okay, so at this time, I would like to move to adopt the agenda as submitted with the public comment items stricken. This will require a majority of votes cast.
Point of information, so you are saying that there will be no public comment?
That is correct. That is my motion.
I object.
Okay, well, it hasn't been seconded yet, so let's hold off on that for a second. Is there a second for the motion on the floor?
Second. Mr. Nana, seconds.
Mr. Nana, seconds, the motion on the floor. Mr. Lamb raises an objection, so we will go to a vote. Whenever the Secretary is ready, we will go ahead and proceed with a roll call vote for, again, the motion is to adopt the agenda as submitted with the public comment items stricken.
Yeah, I'll stick the motion text in there. One moment. So Mr. Malagon? My eyes are not good today. And all these people coming into the meeting keep disturbing my screen. Move to...
I'm going to let them in little by little to let you do...
Adopt the agenda as... Oh, adopt the agenda. How did you word that again, please, sir?
Adopt the agenda as submitted with the public comment items stricken.
Okay, and there was an objection. Are we going to debate, Mr. Chair?
Sure, we can go to debate. Mr. Dasing's hand is up. Actually, I'll speak to my motion really quickly first, and then we'll go into debate. So I do believe the LNC has received 300 emails. I think that the public comment, I think it's been exhausted. We understand where members of this body feel, where they fall uncertain, you know, wherever, doesn't really matter where it lies, but I think we've already exhausted all the debate that we need to have about this, about what's happening today. So that's why I'm moving to do that. So if anyone wishes to speak, any LNC member wishes to debate or engage in their right to debate, now would be the time.
I would just say that there are 180 people here for a reason. There are reasons that we got so many emails, and there is a reason that a regional rep was removed. It's because there was no debate, and you don't want to allow a debate, it seems. And I understand why, but I just think this is, this is not the right move.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Vincent?
Yeah, I think we need to have an open nomination process for Chair. I think we should vote down this entire agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
I have a point of order, Mr. Malagon. Just so people aren't confused, this is a special meeting that was called for a purpose. People who gave notice have a right to have their item heard. They, no other member can simply strike what somebody gave notice for.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
You did not approve the agenda.
It doesn't matter. We, it's just the order. I'm sorry.
Let's not have cross talk. No, I understand. Your point of order is well taken. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, so again, I motion against this. I think it's very important for our members to be heard as a very new Region One rep here. Again, seeing how many people are in this meeting, it's certainly something that is pressing to our members. So I think it is absolutely out of order and absurd to strike the opportunity for public comment to be heard. I am a mayor. I understand you all keep saying that. Mr. Lamb?
Sorry, Mr. Lamb, go ahead.
Yeah, again, you keep saying Mr. Lamb. It's Mayor Lamb. I have dealt with many meetings. Public comment is a very important part of this procedure. So I think it is absolutely absurd to strike this from the record.
Okay, so it is in order. That's the one thing I'll correct. And for procedural purposes, it will still be Mr. Lamb for the remainder of this meeting. Mr. Ford?
Typically, the election of a national chair is a process that takes place over anywhere from six months to a year or more, involving thousands of hours of volunteer and candidate commitment. On top of that, we can often see candidates spending thousands of dollars, sometimes tens of thousands of dollars, in order to engage in that race. It's becoming clear to me tonight that there is a rush to push this into a two-hour pigeonhole.
Mr. Malagon, is this relevant to the motion?
Madam Secretary, I have the right to speak as a member of the board. And by the way, I'm not suing the board.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Please, please make sure that your comment is germane to the discussion. We are voting on public comment. We are not voting on striking public comment and adopting the agenda with public comment.
I would like to make a case, as I believe I have a title to, a reasonable case without the constant interruption of the Secretary as to why I believe it's important as a fundamental aspect of libertarianism. So I will just close with this. I will just close with this. And if you keep interrupting me, believe me, I'm better at talking over people than anybody. All right, ultimately, this issue deserves more than two hours' attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Nikala?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think this motion is being mischaracterized. This isn't a motion to try, to try to strike an open election or anything like that. I'm in favor of open nominations for an election. This is just to get by public comment. I got 300 emails, just like everybody else. I think the voice of many people has already been heard in succession, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Mr. Nana?
Is there anybody else with their hand up? Otherwise, what I'm about to say is pointless.
There is not. I suspect you're about to call the question.
That's correct, Mr. Malagon.
Okay, I think that that's unnecessary at this point. There is no further comment on this. There's no further debate on this topic. So when the Secretary is ready, we can go ahead and move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that you ask guests not to raise their hand when we're in the middle of business.
Yes, thank you, Madam Secretary. So yes, if members of the public could refrain from raising their hand, once we get to, once, if this motion does not pass and we do go to public comment, we will ask people to raise their hand, and we will proceed as we would normally.
Okay, Mr. Bost? The question is, shall we eliminate, shall we adopt the agenda as submitted with public comment items stricken? A yes vote would adopt that, a no vote would not.
No.
Mr. Dar?
Yes, adopt as submitted, yes.
With public comments stricken?
Yes, with public comments stricken, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Mr. Dasing?
No.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford? I will come back to Mr. Ford. Mr. Garcia? Okay, thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Pass.
I will vote yes. Ms. Hayes, I mean, Mr. Malagon. I'm going to come to you last as your Chair. Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I still have Mr. Rutherford on here. Let me just delete that. Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Watkins?
No.
Ms. Yana Scavitch?
Yes.
And Mr. Garcia, pass. It is seven to six.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair Pro Tem, it is eight, six, zero. Do you wish to vote?
The Chair will vote aye. The motion passes nine to six. Excellent, so the agenda is adopted. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is Audit Committee. So this was noticed by Ms. Yana Scavitch. Ms. Yana Scavitch, if you'd like to speak to Audit Committee before we open nominations to the floor.
Yes, I would. I will just give a brief overview before, and then I have a motion. For those of you who do not know, the Audit Committee is comprised of three members, a non-officer LNC member and two non-LNC members. The purpose is to select the independent auditor, work with them as necessary, present the findings to the Board and to the members, and ensure any appropriate action is taken in response to any findings. The Audit Committee has access to all records of the organization and can conduct any issue-specific audits if necessary. It is imperative. We elect the Audit Committee tonight. We are a bit behind. We need to select an auditor to get on their calendar. And let's see, I was elected as the LNC rep in December, and the solicitation for applicants went out at the end of December. There were, there are 10 applicants for the remaining two positions.
Thank you, Ms. Yana Scavitch. So with that, I will go ahead and open nominations to the floor. They will not require a second. Does any LNC member wish to raise their hand and nominate any of the members that were submitted? Ms. Yana?
Yes, I would like to nominate Rich Bowen of Florida and Douglas Neville of South Carolina.
Thank you, Ms. Yana Scavitch. So we have our first candidates as Mr. Bowen and Mr. Neville. Mr. Bost?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Dan John of Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Bost. He nominated, so now I have three candidates for two positions. That would be Mr. Dan John from Virginia. Ms. Hayes?
I would like to take my seat back.
Okay, I was actually going to get to that before the vote, but that's fine. Yes, I will cede back to the Region Four Representative. Thank you.
Okay, and I second Ms. Yana Scavitch's nominations.
Good vote of confidence. It's not necessary for nominations, but thank you.
I just wanted to do it.
Fair enough. Any other nominations from the floor? Going once. Mr. Vincent?
Yeah, I'll nominate Kat McElroy.
Okay, Dr. McElroy has been nominated from California. Are there any other nominations on the floor? Going once, going twice. Nominations are now closed. So I'm going to do this in the order in which people were nominated. So Mr. Bowen, are you on this call?
Yes, I'm present.
Mr. Bowen, would you like to speak? Well, first, I'll ask before we proceed, do you accept your nomination?
Yes, I do accept the nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Would you care to speak to your nomination for up to, I guess we'll do up to five minutes?
Yeah, I only really need a minute or two, but I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of you know me. There are some of you that probably maybe not. So I just want to let you know, my name is Rich Bowen. I'm a Florida resident, formerly New Jersey resident. With New Jersey, I was their state treasurer for a number of years. I want to thank Kathy for her nomination. I look forward hopefully to working with her. And I am a retired CPA. My CPA resides in Pennsylvania. I was a single proprietor CPA for a number of years. And from 2003 to 2015, I consulted and contracted with BDO, which is the sixth largest audit firm in the country, and Citron Cooperman, which is the 21st largest CPA firm in the country, providing audit and assurance services. More importantly, I actually had a number of clients that I worked with, nonprofits, smaller organizations, who I consulted with when they were having their audit completed by public accounting firms. So I've actually been able to see the audit process from both sides of the desk. I've also served on this committee before. As many of you know, I was on this committee from 2019 to 2023. Would like to serve on it again. Again, would love to work with Kathy. We do work together well. And just to let anybody know, if they have any questions as to where I've been, I do want to let everybody know, I did take some personal time off at the end of the convention last year just to kind of clear my head, get my priorities in order. I've been in politics a long time, and I found that one of the best things you can do when you're involved in party politics is just to step away and clear your head for a few months. So that's why I have not been around. I know a couple of people had called. They were concerned it might be a medical issue. It was not. I want to thank everybody for their concern and checking in, but that's about all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Next up, we will have, I believe it was Mr. Neville. Mr. Neville, are you present?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Fantastic, Mr. Neville. First, do you accept your nomination?
I do. Yes, thank you.
Okay, would you like to speak to your nomination for up to five minutes?
Sure. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Malagon. I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone's time. I'm excited to get involved. I've never been involved with the Libertarian Party before, even at the local level.
I envy you.
But I'm interested. And so I have over 25 years of corporate finance experience in the private sector, mostly in manufacturing, the last 16 of which have been in corporate treasury. So I'm not a CPA. I'm not an accountant, but I'm a treasury professional. And so what that means, it's a little different than accounting in that my background is mostly in banking, banking relationships, and even things like T and E spend, et cetera. So I have a certification in that, in that area. I have an MBA from a top 25B school, and I love the Libertarian Party. I've never been a member, actually, but I've, but I'm passionate about it and would love to get involved. So that's why I'm here, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Neville. Up next, I believe we have Mr. Daniel John. Mr. Daniel John, are you on this call?
I am.
Fantastic, Mr. John. First, do you accept your nomination?
I do.
Fantastic. Second, would you like to speak to your nomination for up to five minutes?
Please.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. My name's Dan John. I'm with the LPVA from Virginia, and I'm the treasurer there. And I really love to work on the Audit Committee to get more experience with the LNC and be a bigger part of our national presence. I'm a CPA. I own my own firm, Agora Financial Services. I have done, participated on the backend of audits, where I do audit support for companies, usually facing anywhere between, you know, when somebody gets a credit line, they'll have a bank audit, they'll have other things like DCAA audits and things like that. And so I'll participate in a lot of those, providing kind of financial support for those kind of things. I would really love to be a part of the Audit Committee, and I think I can add a lot to it. So please consider me as a good selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. John. Up next, and I believe last, we have Dr. Catherine McElroy. Are you on this call, Dr. McElroy? Thank you, Mr. John. Up next, and I believe last, we have uh, Dr. Catherine McElroy. Are you on this call, Dr. McElroy? Going once. Going twice. Who was the nominee? Uh, Mr. Vincent, did you nominate Dr. McElroy?
I did.
Can you affirm that she has accepted this nomination?
Um, I can. She, she reached out to me. Oh, as, as of today, I can't. Um, she did reach out to me saying she wanted to um, be on Audit Committee. So other than that, I can reach out now and see. Um.
Well, if you'd like, I was gonna give you the option, just for the sake of time, we do have a lot to get through. I, I mean, if you can affirm that she has accepted her nomination, if you'd like to speak to her nomination, you're welcome to, since she doesn't appear to be on this call.
Um, yeah, uh, Kat has done a great job with the MC organizing. Um, I'm reaching out to her now to confirm, but she seemed really excited uh, at the opportunity and asked to be on the not, um, the Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vincent.
I can confirm her nomination was accepted.
Okay. All right, so we have four, four nominees for two spots. Uh, Ms. Janice Scavitch?
May I speak to my nominations?
Uh, you may.
Is that in order? Okay. Um, I hope everybody reviewed all ten of the applications. I believe that based on experience, there were a couple, uh, three or four that clearly had um, you know, experience and above and beyond the rest. Uh, most years, the Audit Committee, um, it did, the, is kind of uh, boring and we select an auditor and, and so forth. We all know at this point, we will be conducting an investigation, what form that takes, I'm not sure. It will, however, in some ways overlap with the Audit Committee. Um, I selected these two gentlemen, um, Mr. Bowen because he has been part of the Audit Committee before and on the LNC and knows our ways without having been involved in any um, with the LNC in the recent months. Um, and also Mr. Neville. Um, he has twenty-five years of experience. Rich has um, about twenty years of experience. Um, they come from two different sides of the same issue. Um, Mr. Neville really um, interested me. I have talked to him on the phone uh, because he has been on the other side. I think we all know at the end of this, there will be some corrective action that we will need to take before our audit and we will need to implement some changes and some changes in policy. And I think he is the guy to do that. Further, um, in um, the Audit Committee needs to be independent. And it um, is my position that we should not consider anyone who has weighed in on the, the chair decision, supporting one, one candidate or another.
All hearsay.
Has done that or Mr. Neville. Um, we, this, the Audit Committee audits the officers. Um, it is, it needs to be independent. This is an important job. We need to do that to maintain the integrity of the process. Um, so um, I believe these two guys fit the bill to both be experienced and independent from internal issues.
Thank you, Ms. Janice Scavitch. Apologies for that interruption. I believe the person either left or was removed. Any, would any member of the LNC that made a nomination like to speak to their nomination? We've had Mr. Vincent do so, Ms. Janice Scavitch. I believe Mr. Watkins made uh, Mr. Watkins nominated Mr. John. Uh, Mr. Watkins, would you care to speak to that nomination?
Uh, that was Mr. Bost.
Yeah.
For Bost, apologies. If you'd like to speak to your nomination, now would be the time.
Now, just briefly, I would like to add that Mr. Uh, John has been a um, longtime member of the party and has invested in the success of the party. Uh, so I would uh, just like to add that to his um, qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bost. So we have again, four nominees for two positions on the Audit Committee. We can do this a few different ways. So we can do a vote where people pick two. You know, we do it by name. If someone wishes to make a motion to adopt as a slate or one individual and do that at a time, we can do that. Um, if someone wishes to make a motion either way, if someone wishes to make a motion to adopt a person or a slate, they can do so now. Otherwise, we would go to a name vote, name roll call vote. Ms. Janice Scavitch?
In the interest of time, I would um, move to do this by slate and if we do not have a um, m- majority, then move to individuals.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Janice Scavitch. Is there a second?
Second. I'll object.
So that was seconded by Mr. Redpath. So we're not there yet. I think that was Mr. Lamb. Uh, we're not there yet. So uh, Ms. Harlos?
I, I'd never, ne- never mind. I just want, well, I just wanted to remind everyone, well, it's me and Mr. Redpath cannot um.
Oh, that's right. Yes, I was gonna, thank you so much. Uh, so just so that everyone is clear, the officers, the officers are not allowed to, yes, uh, thank, oh, the officers are not allowed to vote on this topic uh, or on this, on this, on the members for this committee.
Mr. Malagon, if I may say, I did not object. That was Mr. Redpath that objected.
No, it was Mr. Ford.
Our board. Okay, let's not have cross-talk, people. Let's.
I had one other thing to add, Ms. Uh, Mr. Malagon, if that would, if that would be acceptable. Um, I believe Ms. Janice Scavitch moved to elect by slate and I'm assuming the slates are the two candidates she um, vouched for and then um, the other two candidates. And if no majority is reached, then individually, um, I would just respectfully suggest if no majority is reached, then we do it where it's select two, where all four names are up and each person selects two. Because if you do it individually, we're gonna have ties perhaps and all kinds of other issues. So if the slate, if no slate gets a majority, then we have all four names up and when I call on people, they pick uh, two people.
Understood. Uh, I agree. I would think that would be the best course of action. Ms. Janice Scavitch, can you confirm that the two members were the ones that you nominated?
Yes.
And so Mr. Redpath has withdrawn his, he technically wasn't supposed to be able to second that. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nana and we will, um, I'm gonna put the secretary's hand down just so I don't lose track here. Uh, Mr. Bost?
Uh, yes, what, can you clarify that uh, voting by slate was what was moved?
Yeah, so Ms. Janice Scavitch moved.
Didn't I object to that?
I understand. Mr. Ford, Mr. Ford, come to order now. All right, I will explain this. There is a, a motion on the floor that was seconded by Mr. Nana. Okay, we are not at a vote yet. Okay, there will be debate about this. Uh, an objection just means, so I was gonna say, if there's no objection, clearly there was going to be an objection. So we are going to move to debate and then we're going to move to a vote. If you do not wish to adopt the slate that was put forward by Ms. Janice Scavitch via motion and seconded by Mr. Nana, you're welcome to vote it down and then make a motion after that the majority is not reached. If that is not reached, then we will go, as the secretary suggested, we will do four names and we will just do it by name where you will vote for the two people that you wish to vote for, for this committee. Does that make sense to everybody? Mr. Dasing.
I was just gonna say, uh, it probably would just be easier if everyone just picked two on a vote, but doesn't seem like that's what anyone wants.
Thank you, Mr. Dasing. Mr. Ford?
Given the importance of this position at this time, and very often this is not to diminish their work of forgotten committee, but given the singular importance of this committee at this point in moment, in this moment in LP history, I find it incomprehensible that in order for ease of voting, we would create slates. I personally wish to vote for.
Where, are we getting into, we're not at debate yet. It seems like you're making, we're not, we're not at debate yet.
Why don't, why don't you guys just run the meeting however you want and you'll just.
We're not at debate, Mr. Ford. Please come to order. I'll ask again. Come to order. Okay, so if there's nothing else to say, we will move to, we will, we will go into debate now. If anyone wishes to debate, so Mr. Ford, your hand is up. If we're at debate now, you are welcome to voice your objections and you, this is the time to do it now. Anyone that wishes to engage debate on this motion is welcome to raise their hands. Mr. Ford?
All right, so given the historical importance of the Audit Committee at this moment in LP history, I find it incomprehensible that we would invent, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we would invent the notion that you have to vote by slate. I personally, the way the slate appears, wish to vote for someone from each slate. What, what? It just appears that this entire meeting is what they call the bums rush. I would suggest and I object.
We will not, we will not, Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford, we will not question people's intentions. That is out of order.
That's all we do on this committee.
Mr. Ford? If you would like to debate the motion, you are welcome to vote it down and then you can, we can proceed with a different motion if you wish. I asked if anyone wanted to make a motion. Ms. Janice Scavitch raised her hand. That's where we're at.
Okay.
Watkins.
So.
Uh, I think this can also just be done on open vote. I don't really see, I, I, I get that we might be behind, but I don't really see the need to, to rush it. I mean, a week can be okay and those that are selected, I think, would be able to deal with a time crunch.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Lamb?
I think uh, this committee is very important and I, I don't think that there's a need to go by slate. So I would strongly prefer that we go by individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Ms. Janice Scavitch? Okay, um.
In the interest of the comments, I um, will, um, I don't know, withdraw my uh, motion or amend it.
At this point, so at this point, there's only one way to, there's only really one way to proceed. We do have to proceed with a vote. It was made and seconded. What we could do here is if everyone wishes to do what the secretary suggested, vote this motion down and then we will do a vote by name so that people can select the two that they wish and then we will go with, if there is a majority, there are a top two contenders, then we can go ahead and move that, that route.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so does everyone understand what we're voting on now? So if you'd like to vote in a different way, or you have other preferred candidates, or would just like a different voting mechanism or process for this, vote this motion down and then make the appropriate motion. Does everyone, does anyone not understand? Okay, I, and I assume that everyone understands the alignment here.
Just, I'm sorry, I, I do have a question. We are not voting on, we're just voting on the method, not on names right now. Is that correct?
No, right now we are voting, so Ms. Janice Scavitch's motion was to adopt a slate and if the majority prevails, then you know, proceed to the, to a vote. If, if it doesn't fail, if it does fail, then proceed a different fashion. So right now you're voting on, if you vote yes on this, then that means that it would be Mr. Neville and uh, Mr. Bowen would automatically be on the Audit Committee.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I, Ms. Janice Scavitch can correct me, but I think the intent was the motion that the voting method would be to adopt by slate, not to automatically adopt the slate with this vote. That this is just a vote on the voting method. If it passes, we will then move to a motion by slate and if it fails, we'll then move to an election where people pick two out of the four names.
Perhaps I misunderstood Ms. Janice Scavitch's motion. If Ms. Janice Scavitch would like to clarify, then I'll move to Mr. Nana.
Initially, that was my motion. I am fine with um, not doing it by slate, but having us in a roll call manner, uh, select two names. Um, I do have concerns if we go individually through every you know, for each person that we will have ties and so forth. But I am fine with uh, not having a slate, but everyone just votes for two people.
Okay, so everyone, if that is the way that you wish to proceed, just vote this motion down. Uh, Mr. Nana, did you have a question?
Just ready to vote.
Okay, actually, let's just, let's do this. This will be, this will be easier. Is there any uh, um, is, are we okay just? Does anyone wish to vote yes on this motion? Going once, going twice. Okay, so the motion is gonna be considered voted down. Uh, it was voted down without objection. So now we are going to move, so if anyone would like to make a motion to do, to select two members for the Audit Committee by roll call by name, so select two names. So we have, we can put, we can have the secretary put the four names on the screen and then you can select two names when your name is called. Uh, Mr. Nana?
Yes, I move for the committee to select the Audit Committee members by name, picking two each. Second.
And that's what's seconded by Ms. Hayes. Okay, so now there is a new motion on the floor. So again, just so everyone understands where we're at while the secretary's making the ballot. We are doing this by roll call, name, roll call. So that means that you will select two names. You don't have to select two. You can select no one. You can abstain. But you can select up to two names that you wish to fill the Audit Committee vacancies out of the four that were, or you, I guess, well, no, those were the only nominees. So it would be from the four nominees. And again, those nominees are, uh, it would be. Oh, we're putting them on right now.
Yeah, I'll get them. Um, I, I was doing that while we were, that's this one. It's Mr. Bowen, Mr. John. I put things in alphabetical order. That's just the way I do it. So there's, that isn't any favoritism, it's just alphabetical order. Uh, Mr. Bowen, Mr. John, Mr. Nebbles, Ms. McElroy.
Uh, Mr. Bowen, right? Do we have him first?
Yeah, he's on the first column there.
Okay, so everyone understands what we're voting on and how we're voting? Does anyone not understand what's happening?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I did want to confirm that Kat has uh, uh, said yes to her nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Bost. I appreciate it. Excellent. So when the secretary's ready, we will move to a by-name vote. Please do not vote for more than two people whenever the secretary's ready.
Okay, so the way I'm going to handle is, Mr. Boss, I'm going to ask you each person, but I'm starting with you, um, which two names or a name and no doubt or an extension? So, Mr. Boss?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I would vote for Kat McElroy and Dan John.
Hey, Mr. Dar.
I would like to vote for Mr. Bowen and Mr. Nebbles.
Mr. Dasing?
I'll vote for Rich Bowen and Dan John.
Mr. Ford?
Bowen and McElroy.
Here, one moment. I didn't have your name underlined. So you said Bowen and McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia? I'll come back to Mr. Garcia. Ms. Hayes?
Uh, Bowen and Neville.
Mr. Lamb?
Kat McElroy and Dan John.
Mr. McGee?
Mr. Bowen and Mr. Nebbles.
Mr. Nana?
Mr. Bowen and Mr. Nebbles.
Mr. Nakala?
I vote for Mr. Bone and Mr. Nebbles.
Mr. Vincent?
When, when did Bill Redpath get kicked off this committee?
Um, you can't vote for audit.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I'm a slow learner, I guess.
I legitimately thought you were making a joke. That worked out, though. That's funny.
Yeah, I'm not, I kicked myself off too. Mr. Vincent?
Uh, Mr. John and Ms. McElroy.
Mr. Watkins?
Uh, Dan John.
Is there a second vote?
Nah.
Oh, do you want that second one as no doubt or just leave that as one vote?
Just one vote is fine. Uh, it's going a certain way anyway. Doesn't matter.
Okay, Ms. Janice Scavitch?
Mr. Bowen and Mr. Neville, and I believe you spelled his name wrong.
I looked on the application. Oh, is there no S?
There's no S.
Okay.
B E, and I believe it's B E L?
No, I think it's K, he's here.
I believe it's K N E B E L.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. It'll be, it'll be correct in the minutes. Um, everyone knows who, who everyone is, but I will make sure that is correct in the minutes. Okay, so the vote totals are Mr. Bowen, eight votes, Mr. John, five votes.
Oh, what about Mr. Um, Mr. Garcia?
Oh, yes, I knew I was missing something. Mr. Garcia?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, I'll vote for uh, Mr. Bowen and Mr. Neville too.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Bowen. All right, so Mr. Bowen received nine votes, Mr. John received five votes, Mr. Neville received seven votes, and Ms. McElroy received four votes.
Okay, so we do have, I mean, one clearly has the majority, so Mr. Bowen. In regards to Mr. Neville, seven, I believe eight would be a majority, is that correct?
No, because the, the treasurer and the secretary cannot vote.
Oh, that's right, correct. Okay, so we do have, okay, so we have congratul- congratulations to Mr. Bowen and Mr. Neville for their spots on the Audit Committee. Uh, please, Miss Yana Scavitch, I'm assuming will reach out to you in a timely fashion to apprise you of the situation and get you up to speed and go from there.
Yes, I, I will do that and send them their NDAs.
And send them their NDA is very important. Thank you, Miss Yana Scavitch. Okay, now, uh, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is.
Point of order.
Mr. Chatterton?
Um, the Region One Chairs have made an emergency vote to remove Mr. Garcia from his position effective immediately. Um, so I believe that would elevate me into the seat.
I have a point of order, um, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Madam Secretary?
I did not raise this point of order before because I knew, um, it was going to be cured immediately. Um, the regional chairs do have to follow the regional agreement. I happen to know the regional agreement very well because I wrote it. The regional agreement, which I would be more than happy to put up on the screen, requires for any vote of the state chairs that it be by email ballot that is open for three days. Um, that did not, in fact, happen with Mr. Lamb, but that was certainly going to pass, and I let that slide. But this latest move is completely against the regional bylaws, so I raise a point of order that we do not recognize this.
Uh, I, you took the words right out of my mouth. I'm familiar with the Region One Agreement as well, not as well as you are. But, uh, that point of order is not well taken. Mr. Garcia retains his seat.
You mean it is well taken?
Well, it is well taken, yes. Uh, Mr. Chatterton's point was not well taken, yours is well taken. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is the Chair's vacancy. We will go ahead, this was noticed by Mr. Nana. And we will go ahead and, uh, Mr. Nana, if you'd like to speak to your, uh, to your notice motion before we open nominations to the floor, uh, Mr. Nana, you have the floor.
Sure, uh, I'll keep it very brief, uh, in the interest of time. Um, apologies that I'm a little under the weather. Um, so I think we do need to fill the Chair's vacancy tonight. There's a lot of important things we need to do as a board, and waiting to fill the Chair's vacancy is not going to be a good look, especially, you know, we were thrust into this situation. Fortunately, none of us want to be where we are right now. But this is the hand we've been dealt, so we need to do the business of the L N C and move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Nana. So with that, we will go ahead and open the floor to nominations for Libertarian National Committee Chair. Watkins?
I moved to postpone the election of L N C Chair and Vice Chair to a special meeting to be held February twenty third, twenty twenty five, at seven P M Eastern.
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, let's.
Uh, you need to repeat that, please, Mr. Watkins.
Walk into.
Sure.
Or email the secretary the text better yet.
I could do it on the fly if you just say it.
Yeah, I moved to postpone the election of L N C Chair and Vice Chair to a special meeting to be held on February twenty third, twenty twenty five, at seven P M Eastern Time.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to postpone the election. Uh, the election of, oh, I'm sorry, you're doing both right now? So elections of Chair and Vice Chair, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to postpone the elections of the L N C Chair and the, and Vice Chair to a special meeting to be held February twenty third, twenty twenty five, at seven P M Eastern. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lamb. We will now go into debates. So.
Mr. Chair, could you put me last after everyone else? Um, I can't raise my hand when I'm sharing my screen.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so we have Mr. Dar and Mr. Nana, uh, Mr. Dar.
I would like to point out that, uh, it was told to me that, uh, by D C law, um, any nonprofit needs to have a chair. Because of our situation where we do not have a chair or vice chair, this could be very problematic to us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dar, Mr. Nana.
Sorry, I'm lowering my hand.
Okay, uh, Mr. Boss?
Uh, yes, as previously mentioned, there has been overwhelming response to this issue, and it, uh, the overwhelming response has been that we need to take our time and open up, uh, nominations and, and go about this deliberately and not rush it through in one evening. That has been the overwhelming response from the membership. Uh, we owe that to them, particularly in this, uh, time where we, we're not, we're not, we don't have the leisure of a convention or anything like that. I believe we, uh, yeah, I've said it.
Thank you, Mr. Boss, Mr. Lamb?
I had my hand after.
Uh, I thought you wanted to go last, did you?
Oh, no, I meant last after the people who had their hands raised because I couldn't hold, I couldn't.
Oh, apologies. So go ahead, Madam Secretary, and then we'll go to Mr. Lamb and Mr. Watkins.
Uh, okay, um, I'm going to rewrite what Mr. Nana said. I do believe that's correct, that D C law requires that. I am going to contradict Mr. Boss. No, we have not had overwhelming emails to that effect. In fact, there has been calls to mass email the L N C. And it was.
She asked for last.
Uh, person, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, if you could just wait for just a minute. I'm removing whoever Rich Leach is.
You're rich, Leach?
Yeah.
Uh, so they are being removed. Give me just a moment. Okay, apologies, Madam Secretary, uh, please continue.
Yeah, there, there, there certainly, there has been organized calls in which people are following directions one way or another. Um, and that I do not believe is necessarily the true sentiment of the party. I think actually what has happened on the E, E, L N C email list on the past few days, particularly the capa pasta, copy pasta, not the people who are speaking from their heart.
I object, this is not your main to the motion.
Mr. Ford? Apologies, Madam Secretary.
Only the secretary can object.
Mr. Ford? Uh, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry, please continue.
Thank you. I think it's been borderline harassment to the L N C. Um, so I believe we are left to our best judgment at this point. Um, I've heard from a lot of members who have said that we have information that other people may not have and that they have elected us to do a job. We, I, as, as those of you know, I wasn't a fan of the joint fundraising agreement. But we need a chair in place that is going to finish out that agreement. I lost my J C appeal, that's the way it goes. And we cannot afford to wait until the end of February. The L N C cannot afford to continue to be in turmoil. This issue needs to be settled. And unfortunately, there have been reports of just some really, really bad behavior surrounding this. And we need to resolve it one way or another. So I urge everyone to vote now and remind them of where I just, uh, two thirds vote.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Mr. Lamb?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Magalon. I, I think it's very important to have a very open procedure going forward. Uh, of course, there have been several people that have expressed on social media their interest in filling this role. So I, I would really prefer to see a public debate between all of those that are interested in doing so. I think it would be a great opportunity for fundraising and interest for the party. Maybe a great publicity opportunity. And I strongly urge this committee to consider voting against any actual appointment this evening and postponing this to a future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, Mr. Watkins?
Yes, um, I think making decisions under duress does not make for good decisions. Um, yes, we do need a chair. However, I, I think we can wait sometime. I don't think we should wait forever, but I think allowing some time for an honest conversation to happen and allow interested parties to at least state why they should be considered for Chair and Vice Chair, um, that should be allowed. I don't see why that's so controversial. And Ms. Kennedy has explained why, um, the K V F fundraiser, um, it, it should still be fine. There should be no hiccups. I believe she's on here and can probably answer any questions that anybody might have surrounding that. Um, we have the treasurer, like, I, I just don't see the need, a legitimate need to rush this. I think it would, it would benefit the party at large. It would benefit the committee to actually have a conversation about the goal that we set out to do and, and the vision that we want as a board. And to those that are saying that, um, you know, especially Ms. Harlow's to criticize the mass emails, she has been a beneficiary of many mass emails. So I think we should wait and, uh, be patient, and I think with patience, um, a better path will present itself. This is not the right path.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, Mr. Vincent?
I agree with the sentiments of Mr. Watkins. Um, we did receive an overwhelming amount of emails, um, just for different people for Chair. Um, mainly Michael Heiss, uh, a lot of Justin Amash as well. I saw maybe one toad consideration in there. Uh, so I'm taking into account all of those emails that I received over the past few weeks because at the end of the day, they hit the send button, copy and paste or whatever. That's how they felt.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, Ms. Hayes.
Could somebody give me the D C statute? If you have.
Are you listening to, uh?
Madam Secretary and Mr. Nana.
I'm sorry.
I'm looking up something else right at the moment. But I will.
To me, if you, any, anyone can just text it to me, thank you.
Or person in the chat, I'd, I'd like to take a look at it as well.
So the chat is off. If someone would like to provide Ms. Hayes with a D C statute or would like to raise their hand to read it, we will not have cross talk during this meeting. Mr. Boss?
And, um, Mr. Chair, I was, I was mistaken, it is majority vote. Uh, Parliamentarian Brown, uh, texted me to correct me.
Oh, I assumed it, I didn't hear that part, I didn't hear that part, I assumed it would be majority vote, but, um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Boss?
Uh, yes, is this my opportunity for second comment on the motion?
Yes, please.
Just to clarify. Uh, yes, I, I wanna politely contradict, um, Ms. Harlow's. Uh, there was a lot of copy pasta stating preference for a particular person. There were also a lot of specific calls to delay and take our time, both in email, social media, Twitter, wherever you, uh, uh, personal, personal calls to me. There has been a lot of calls to wait and deliberate on this matter amongst the copy pasta for particular individuals. So it is, it is not a mere matter of everybody wants this guy or that guy. It is, it is, there has definitely been response that we need to take our time and wait. Um, and I think that is, that is, that is pretty clear, actually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boss, Mr. Ford?
Um, a serious legal question. I'd like to understand, because I'm not an attorney and I don't pretend to be one either, uh, that is there a difference in the law, the D C law as alleged, which requires a chair between the pro temp chair and the chair itself? I would point to normal circumstances where a chair might have to resign under duress. A chair might, God forbid, pass away. For some reason, a chair is removed and the committee is not able to meet uh, for a number of reasons within a period of time. I find it hard to believe, as someone who actually has spent a lot of time around lawyers, but I'm not one, that the D C would come down on someone's inability to instantly appoint a chair. Um, on a secondary note, and I'm sure you'll find this dilatory, but I do object to the notion that, uh, individuals on this board are projecting behavior on the members. Uh, there's a longstanding tradition of caucus style voting, and I've been the beneficiary and they're on the wrong side of it. But to, to insult the members by claiming that somehow or inferring that they're not under their own control is insulting, and I think an apology is due. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Ford, I can't speak to the specific D C statute. I can say that Chair Pro Tem in this case would be, it's purely ceremonial. I can only, as Chair Pro Tem right now, I can only preside during meetings. There's no such thing as a permanent Chair Pro Tem. That is not something that, that happens. Usually you have a Vice Chair that takes the reins. Unfortunately, Mr. Rutherford resigned. Uh, I can't cite anything off the top of my head. I am, I, I am a tech recruiter, I am not a full, I, I'm a tech recruiter and a philosopher, I'm not an attorney, so.
And then I, then respectfully, I'd ask for some case law where you've got a situation where a, a, a organization was not able to appoint a chair within a certain period of time, and that led to any negative results. I would imagine none exists as long as it's reasonable. I don't think a week or two weeks is unreasonable for the election of a chair. Again, given that, that the normal process takes six months. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion, Mr. Ford, Mr. Nana?
Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute. I called a question.
All right, Mr. Nana has called the question, is there any objection?
Point of order, um, to clarify the motion that was made by Region One Chairs.
You're not recognized at this time, Mr. Chatterton, you are an alternate.
That's a point of order, and the rep has been.
You're Chatterton, I will continue to mute you, and I want to remove you from this room, but you have no voting rights here. Please stop, come to order. Now, okay, so, uh, is there any objection to calling the question? I heard, I believe I heard an objection.
Correct.
And I would like to offer clarification, Mr. Malagon, uh, with Chair Pro Tem Malagon, pardon me. I, I tried to find it in the D C law, it was told to me. Um, I do not, I cannot find it in the D C law. Um, I believe there are other reasons, but I just wanted to clarify for the board that I'm looking for that and can't find it. Um, so if anyone else can find it, that's wonderful.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, so there's an objection to calling the question, so we will move to a vote on calling the question for this, um, for this topic.
Okay, give me one moment, I need to create a ballot. Mr. Boss?
Uh, could you share the?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So again, this, we are now voting on calling the question for debate, so ending debate on this topic, that's where we're at. Not on the motion.
No to calling the question.
Here, one moment. Um, just because each time someone joins the room, it freezes my screen. Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dasing?
No.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
No.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
I will vote yes. And I don't know why it's turning him into yeses. Okay, uh, Ms. Hayes?
I'm gonna see the rest of my votes this meeting to Mr. Malagon.
Mr. Malagon?
Uh, the Chair will vote last.
Uh, point of order, Mr. Magalon?
It's Malagon and yes, Mr. Lamb?
I apologize. Uh, I was informed that the ballot to remove Mr. Roman has been open since January thirtieth at twelve forty five Eastern, which makes it more than three days.
I am not aware of something, I'm not aware of that. I can't speak to Region One, that's not my understanding, Mr. Garcia.
That is not three days.
Madam Secretary, Madam Secretary, uh, so one, I was gonna say that's not three days yet. It would be at the close of, of today, I believe. But, Mr. Garcia, would you care to weigh in on this, since you are the Region One Representative in question?
No, I'm good.
Uh, very well, so we will proceed. Uh, Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Watkins?
No.
Ms. Yana Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr., uh, let me look at the votes. Um, Mr. Malagon, your vote will not matter. It is five to, uh, five yes, six no.
Wait, I can't believe the.
No, there's, that's wrong.
Uh, because, because it's.
Everyone stop for a minute, everyone stop for a minute, I got it, okay.
Two, three. Oh, yeah, because it turned, I have some formatting issues, one second. Um, I apologize, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So there are eight yeses at the moment. And six no's, it still will not, you still will not make a difference, two thirds means.
Uh, that's fine, the Chair will vote aye. And motion, uh, the motion fails.
I don't know why it's not auto adding, but.
So what we'll do is, so everyone that's spoken, so I guess we're still open on debate on this, on this topic. And again, the, the topic is the motion on the floor, which is to postpone the appointment of a Chair and Vice Chair until I believe it was February twenty third at seven P M Eastern Time. So if you've already spoken twice, you're out of luck. Um, I don't know why I'm doing a thumbs up, Zoom's fun that way. I'm not doing a thumbs up. So, uh, anyone else wish to speak on this topic, Mr. Nana?
I have a point of inquiry.
Sure.
Uh, wouldn't it just take a majority to call the question?
No, it's two thirds.
Two thirds, alright.
Yeah. Really? No one else has anything to say? Uh, and we're, Mr. Watkins, did you speak twice? I think this.
No, I raised my hand, but I didn't get to speak.
Sure. So this will be your second time. Go ahead, Mr. Watkins.
Yes. Um, again, I, I just see no legitimate reason to have to push, push this through tonight. Um, I mean, we don't even know. We know there are declared candidates. Um, I am sure y'all have your own, um, and that will be revealed probably shortly. Um, I think it is unfair and does a disservice to the members and to the rest of the board who would prefer to have an, an actual discussion about strategy, because I've heard none. Um, we adopted a strategy and, you know, we need a plan to execute that. And there has been at least one candidate that has laid out plainly how they intend to do that, whether they fail at that or not. That's, that would be, that would remain to be seen. But just to put somebody in like this, I think it's just, it's wrong and it will not set whoever the incoming chair is up for success. Um, there will be more animosity and I, that, that wouldn't even be fair to them. Um, I think it should be considered. Um, and whoever is interested in that role should take that into account and advocate for at least an open and honest discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. I'm gonna skip Mr. Ford because Ms. Anna Scavitch has not yet spoken on this topic. And then I'll jump to Mr. Nikala and then we'll circle back to Mr. Ford, uh, Madam Secretary, and then Mr. Dassing. All right, I don't think Mr. Dassing's spoken either, so we'll do, I'm sorry, we'll do Ms. Anna Scavitch, and we'll do Mr. Dassing, then Mr. Nikala, and then we'll circle back around. So, Ms. Anna Scavitch?
I do have a concern that is operational. I would prefer not to talk about it publicly. Um, I don't know if there is any appetite to go into, um, executive session. If y'all may, you know, don't want to and, uh, want us to share dirty laundry in public, then, then I can.
Understood. Uh, so I didn't hear a motion, so we'll continue on. So we'll do Mr. Dassing, then Mr. Nikala, and then we'll circle back around. Mr. Dassing?
So I was sent, um, I was sent, I just said to Meredith, but it's about DC law. And, um, one of my chairs sent it to me saying that DC law does not appear to require a standing chair for nonprofits. I sent the code over to Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Dassing, and that's Ms. Hayes for the sake of decorum. Uh, Mr. Nikala?
Thank you, Mr. Malagon. I guess I'm just profoundly confused why we would wanna move this two weeks. If it's clear that Mr. Heiss is running and he may be nominated tonight, and if the board has an appetite for Mr. Heiss, he could be elected as a new LNC Chair. So I just, I just don't understand the need to move two weeks. It doesn't make any sense to me at all. So, uh, I'm not supporting this move.
Actually, three weeks.
Return to Kayla. Yeah, it'd be closer to three weeks, I was gonna say. Uh, we'll do Mr., Mr. Ford, Madam Sec, and then, uh, Mr. Lamb. Mr. Ford?
Yeah, uh, do we have a definitive opinion, legal opinion, on whether or not the, the law that is allegedly supporting this motion, um, is real? Uh, that, that, that I think would be fairly critical, given the emphasis a number of members of this body have on the law. So I, I, I think before we even move anywhere, and then I will motion to move into executive session, uh, to, uh, if that's appropriate, of course, right now, to, uh, discuss Ms. Uh, Anna Scavitch's concerns.
Can you wait to make that motion until after?
Absolutely. But I, I, I would, I would love a, at the mercy of the court here, I would love a definitive explanation as to whether or not DC law actually says that, and if it doesn't, why it was introduced into a meeting as if, in fact, it was the law.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I can't speak to that, and I doubt that any lawyer on this call would, would answer a legal question. Uh, they're lawyers and they don't answer questions without getting paid and having attorney-client privilege. They don't just say things on a recorded Zoom call, but, uh, that is.
They just make stuff up. Okay.
That is not my call to make. Mr. Ford, please come to order. Uh, Madam Secretary?
Um, yes, uh, somebody did send me the statute. I do not claim to be an attorney. Um, but it says that at a minimum, a nonprofit corporation shall have two separate officers, one responsible for the management of the corporation, who may be referred to as the president or by any other term used in its articles in corporation or bylaws, and in which our case, it's the chair. And another who is referred to as the treasurer. So as the time periods, case law, no one's gonna get into that. It is in fact the DC law. You interpret it as you will, as a layperson, as I am in fact a layperson, but I will object to Mr. Ford's characterization that that was the only reason. I mentioned it in passing and stated that I wasn't even sure till someone sent it to me. Um, and as a non-lawyer, I will not give a legal opinion, but there was a whole lot more piece of the party. And when we're seeing these, all of a sudden removals of regionals, and whether anyone likes it or not, we're gonna talk about Twitter chatter. There's been a lot of Twitter chatter of.
Let's keep it German, Madam Sec.
Okay, alright. Uh, I, I will do, I think everyone knows what I'm referring to. So I believe it's in the best interest of the piece of this party that we need to move forward and come together under somebody. Whoever it is, when nominations are opened up for Chair, if the nominees are in this room, I am sure they will give their vision. I, I don't expect it to go directly to a vote, that there will be speeches and perhaps questions and answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, so was your second time, Mr. Lamb, for your second time?
Yes, certainly. I, I would just like to address Mr. Nikala's comment that we are in any way going to be nominating Mr. Heiss this evening as our Chair. I have no intention of doing so, quite frankly. I have seen on social media that he is interested. Of course, our outgoing Chair has given her referral or her ascension. Yes, thank you very much. Uh, but I also do think that there are a lot of very good reasons why Mr. Justin Amash would make a great Chair. So I, I will just reiterate that I think it would be excellent for the state of our party, for the health of our party, financially and otherwise, to have a rebo, or robust and open debate, and I would love to see that. Uh, and then we can move forward from there. So that is the only reason that I'm in, of the opinion that we should remove this discussion from the current state and push it to the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Mr. Dar?
And, uh, just to clarify, I, I did bring up the law earlier and was quickly trying to re-look up the tab there to, to share the information, uh, about the law, because it was sent to me by, uh, various individuals with concerns. I am not a lawyer, so that was just my interpretation, uh, based on what I was told and my, uh, particular concern on the issue there. So I'm not a lawyer. I, I can be proven wrong by somebody else, but that is just what the interpretation I, uh, I enlightenment read into that also.
Alright, uh, Mr. Watkins, you've already exhausted your second time, so if there's no one else, I believe debate has ended on this topic. Okay, so we will go ahead and move to a roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Okay, one moment. I need to reshare my screen. I keep on sharing it because I can't raise my hand when I'm sharing. Um, okay? So this is on, I believe it was Mr. Watkins' motion to suspend until February 23rd at 7:00. I, I, I have the text.
Chair and vice chair is right. Yes, so that would be, yes, that would be the text right there.
Yeah, let me just copy it into the ballot so that nobody is confused.
Mr. Watkins, are you content with the motion language?
Maybe one second. Postponing elections. Yes.
Okay. Uh, and it was seconded, I believe it was Mr. Lamb, and we'll go ahead and move to a roll call vote whenever the second is ready.
Yeah, just one second. I'm moving, removing.
Another point of order. Region One has had an email ballot since January 27th.
We are not recognizing alternates at this time.
Mr. Boss?
Point of order.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Was that, who is that? Mr. Boss?
Point of order, Mr. Boss.
Mr. Boss?
Uh, I, I would like to hear Mr. Chatterton's information.
That makes one of us. We're on a vote right now. Uh, we'll go ahead and proceed with the vote.
Mr. Boss?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Dar?
No.
Mr. Dassing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Pass.
I will vote no. Ms. Hay, uh, Ms. Hayes, are you voting or is it?
I'm still seated at this time, so we'll go.
Okay, I'll pass you.
I, I cede for the remainder. I'm not, I'm not interested in this anymore.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McGee?
No.
Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Nikala?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
No.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Anna Scavitch?
No.
Going back to, did Mr. Garcia pass?
Yes, I vote yes.
Ms., uh, Mr. Malagon? It's a tie vote.
The Chair will vote nay. The motion fails.
And it's just not updating down at the bottom. I don't know why. Um, oh yeah, it is. Okay, it's correct. Alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, the motion fails eight to. Is it eight?
Eight no's, seven yeses.
Oh, okay. Eight no's, seven yeses, the motion fails. Alright, so we will go ahead and move on to, uh, where we were at before. That would be, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to nominations for Libertarian National Committee Chair. Mr. Nana?
I would like to nominate Mr. Nikala for Chair.
Okay, Mr. Nikala has been nominated. Mr. Vincent?
Uh, I'd like to nominate Michael Heiss for Chair.
Mr. Vincent has nominated Michael Heiss for Chair. Mr. Nikala, do you accept your nomination?
If the committee wishes to have me as Chair, I gladly accept.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Would you care to speak to your nomination? We'll do up to five minutes.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Malagon. Esteemed colleagues, members of the LNC and party members, I present myself before you as a dedicated libertarian, an entrepreneur, and a fervent advocate for the principles that unite us. My journey with the Libertarian Party began in 2014, and over the past decade, I've had the honor of serving in various capacities, from Region Representative and Treasurer to Chair of the Libertarian Party of Florida. Currently, I serve as an at-large representative on the Libertarian National Committee. I have seen firsthand the challenges and triumphs that our party and this board has faced. Our commitment to individual freedom, limited government, and personal responsibility has never wavered. Yet, to effect meaningful change, we must strengthen our foundation. To that end, I am dedicated to increasing fundraising. Financial resources are the lifeblood of any movement. As a business owner managing multiple enterprises, including Wendy's and Dairy Queen franchises, and a full-service restaurant, I have honed the skills necessary to generate revenue and maintain financial sustainability. Additionally, my role with the Chamber of Commerce has given me firsthand experience in building relationships with business leaders, seeking sponsorships, and securing funding for important initiatives. I will apply that same expertise to expand our party's fundraising efforts, attract major donors, and ensure that the Libertarian Party is financially equipped to compete. Expanding membership, our strength lies in our numbers. By fostering a welcoming environment and actively engaging with communities across the nation, we can grow our membership base. My experience in community engagement, business leadership, and political advocacy has equipped me with the skills to connect with individuals from diverse backgrounds, including entrepreneurs, working-class Americans, and young professionals who are looking for a principled alternative to the status quo. Electing libertarians. To bring about the change we envision, we must have libertarians in positions of influence. I have firsthand experience as a candidate having run for office in Key West District Four. That experience, combined with my work on the Chamber of Commerce Board, has given me direct insight into the challenges of campaigning, navigating policy discussions.
And how to run a coup. It's a fucking coup.
I apologize, Mr. Nikala. Let me remove Mr. Martin and ban him from this meeting.
Please do. Fuck you, Mr. Malagon.
I, it's always nice to have a fan. Uh, Mr. Nikala, I, my sincerest apologies. Please do continue.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. And young professionals who are looking for a principled alternative to the status quo. Um, where was I? Oh, no, I skipped a line there. That experience, combined with my work on the Chamber of Commerce Board, has given me direct insight into the challenges of campaigning, navigating political discussions, and engaging with voters. As Chairman of the Libertarian Party of Florida, I help support dozens of candidates for office, ensuring they have the necessary resources, guidance, and support to run effective campaigns. I understand what it takes to win elections, and I'll use that knowledge to ensure our candidates have the resources, messaging, and strategic support necessary to succeed and govern effectively. Our goal is to field 500 libertarian candidates across the country, providing them with the tools and backing they need to make a real impact at the local, state, and national levels. Collaborating with staff. A cohesive relationship between leadership and staff is crucial for our success. I pledge to work closely with our dedicated team, ensuring open communication, mutual respect, and a shared vision for the future. We must operate as a professional and well-oiled machine, one that is organized, strategic, and results-driven. Our journey is not without challenges, but together we can surmount them. With unwavering dedication, strategic planning, and a united front, we can propel the Libertarian Party to new heights. As someone who has spent years building businesses, raising funds, expanding organizations, and fighting for liberty, I'm uniquely prepared to lead this party into this next era of success. I humbly ask for your support in my bid for Chairman of the Libertarian National Committee. Together, let's make liberty not just an ideal, but a reality for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Before we move on to Mr. Heiss, I would like to just ask one final time if there are any other nominations for Libertarian National Committee Chair before I close them. Going once? Going twice? No takers. Okay, Mr. Heiss, are you on this call?
I have my hand raised. I apologize.
I have my hand raised as well.
Okay, uh, let's, but, uh, Mr. Watkins?
I moved to extend time by 30 minutes, and then after Mr. Heiss gives a five-minute speech that the nominees, uh, be allowed to, um.
Hold on, so I'm gonna.
Do Q and A.
I'm gonna stop you right there. Uh, procedurally, proceed, this is my plan as of right now, just based on having two nominees, and I'm sure that everyone has questions and things that they wanna do. Um, as soon as Mr. Heiss, uh, accepts his nomination and gives, you know, a five-minute, um, speaks to his nomination, what I would like to do is, um, I will move to, I'm gonna move to recess to the call of the Chair for procedural reasons. Otherwise, everything has to go through the Chair. It's gonna be a whole thing, so we're, I'm gonna move to recess for procedural reasons to allow us to do a Q and A with the candidates. It will just be the LNC. The recording will continue. Nothing will change. No one's going to the bathrooms. No one do, no one's doing anything. And then we're gonna do 30 minutes each, if need be, or however long it, it takes so that all the LNC's questions are answered, and then we will come back to order, and then we will move to a vote. Otherwise, it's gonna be a procedural nightmare. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Does that assuage your concerns?
Yes, but I would also like to nominate, um, Justin Amash.
Well, nominations are closed now.
Oh, gotcha. Alright.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Heiss, are you on this call?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Heiss, do you accept your nomination for Libertarian National Committee Chair?
I do.
Okay, you have up to five minutes to speak to that nomination. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay, I wanna start off first by saying thank you and express my gratitude to Angela McCardle, uh, who led this party to the biggest federal victories that we've ever had, led to the freeing of Ross Ulbricht, and proving the concept that this party really can be effective for liberty in real life at the national level, when nobody else has been able to do that in the entire party's history, and she did it on a two-year timeframe with a vision that was completely her own and built from scratch. So Angela, we love you. Thank you. We are grateful, and we are happy to have you in the halls of power extending that influence, uh, for liberty in real life. Uh, and I also want to add that I did not want to exceed a nomination tonight. I did want to have a process of going around to the regions, speaking with people, as I have already done for the Project Decentralized Revolution strategy, uh, and, uh, was hoping to have an open process with the members, uh, but I guess this is the best that I'm going to get. So what I will say is that, uh, while these guys have been on the board talking about how they're gonna do the fundraising and how they're going to, uh, do elections and how they're gonna do, uh, legislative stuff, I've been building it. Uh, they have passed my vision, but in a year unanimous vote, called Project Decentralized Revolution, focusing on local-level elections, focusing on issue coalitions. I have, uh, plans for all manner of strategies that are just as detailed. And I know many of you have seen those presentations, uh, because while this board sits on the National Committee, they don't really come around to the states, and I have come around to most of the states and opened up a dialogue about how national and, uh, state can work together toward, uh, our electoral success and our legislative success. I have developed in detail, in the same detail as Project Decentralized Revolution, uh, uh, aspects of our communication strategy, aspects of our data strategy, of our fundraising strategy, our legislative strategy, uh, uh, our, our election strategy, uh, and that is why I have been working with staff. And working with staff has been an absolute eye-opener for me in this party, because while everyone sees all of this ugliness that you're seeing tonight. Because while everyone sees all of this ugliness that you're seeing tonight on this board, uh, the wins that happen all the time with our staff are not reported on. Uh, you know, we barely see the LNC in the staff meetings. And uh, so while you're looking at the, the board, and you see all of this ugliness, and all of this fighting, and all of this hostility, and all of this bickering, and not a focus on the things that we need, need to share to move together, uh, that is happening every single day in the staff, and it's not reported on. And I promise to work with that staff to make sure those wins are uh, are uh, spoken more loudly and focused on, because that's what we need to be doing to white people to further engage in our party. Uh, we, we don't have enough good news for us to move forward with. And so we have to have good news based on a sound strategy that uh, can actually win and comport with political reality if we're going to uh, do anything with the party such as uh, Angela McCardle. So I will be happy to answer your questions. Uh, I'm, if I, if I am nominated tonight, I promise you I will uh, before fully assuming the role and for, fully forming the duties to get around to all of you, to all of the regions, and answering your questions directly as I already have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Right on time. Uh, Mr. Dart?
Just really quick as point of order, at the beginning of this meeting, I followed up with Justin Amash. I'd been speaking to him earlier, and he declined saying if he's looks forward to supporting our efforts and contributing to the party if everything goes well in any way he can. That's just for those that were interested in that, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Dart. Okay, so what I'd like to do now is I'm going to go ahead and move to recess at the call of the Chair for procedural reasons to allow us to do a Q and A with the candidates and the LNC. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. Okay, uh, before we, I guess, go to, I'm gonna ask for, without objection, I assume that there won't be, but Ms. Harlos, before we do that?
Um, I just didn't know if there was, we could talk, tell me if we just need to talk about this later. Is there going to be any kind of time limits, any kind of LNC members are allowed a certain number of questions? Um, just to ensure fair distribution?
Right, of course. Uh, no, great question. Uh, so I'll address that as soon as we recess. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead, and so I've, I've made the motion to a second by Mr. Lamb. Is there any objection to recessing at the call of the Chair to allow the candidates to do a Q and A with the LNC? The recording will still be on. We will all still be here. Didn't, just to be clear to everybody. Um, is there any objection to that?
I have one additional question. I am so sorry, Mr. Malagon. Um, was there a time limit on this?
So we're gonna do my plan, and we can, I was gonna do, this is, I'll just say my plan before there, in case there's an objection, we can just sort this out now. My plan is to do half an hour for each candidate where it will be, um, you know, it'll be in the order in which they were nominated, so we'll start with Mr. Nikala, then we'll move on to Mr. Heiss. Uh, Mr. Nikala, we can do up to thirty. I, I'm okay with, I'm on Pacific Coast time, people, so I, I'm, I'm good. It's only five forty-five here. I, I can go all night. So, we will start with Mr. Nikala. I was thinking about half an hour per candidate. We can extend it if need be, depending on the questions. I will not limit the LNC's questions. I would ask that uh, you be cognizant of people's time and that you ask like really specific pertinent questions, but I, I think that it should be uh, I think we're gonna do one, one, well, let's do, I don't wanna limit each LNC member to one question at the first round, so we'll do, we're, we're just gonna play this by ear, so whoever the first person that wants to ask Mr. Nikala a question, you can ask a couple, you know, because what, what'll probably happen is if you, you might ask a question that someone else was already going to ask, so it gives them the opportunity to think of another question, and that way we get the most out of our, the most bang for our buck here. So, uh, I think that we should kind of play it by ear. I was thinking about half an hour should suffice for each candidate if we need to extend it a little bit more, because there are just a lot of questions from Mr. Nikala. We will extend that exact, that amount of time to the other candidate. Whether they take up all of the time or not, is, is up to the LNC, but that's how I was planning on doing this. Okay, so is there any objection to recessing at the call of the Chair to allow us to do a question-and-answer session with the candidates and the LNC? Hearing none, we are recessed at eight forty-six PM Eastern Time at the call of the Chair. LNC members, please raise your hands if you have questions for, uh, first it will be Mr. Nikala, and this is just for LNC members. So please raise your hand. I will still moderate, and I will call upon you. We are not technically in session, but we will maintain order. And members of the public that disrupt or say anything, just like we had earlier, will be removed from this room and will not be allowed back in. Is that understood? Okay, so I'm going to, I, and Madam Secretary, before we keep going, there are people that are coming in that I suspect is just uh, kind of more of the trolling, so people are changing their names or doing something somehow that I don't believe were on the initial registered list, and I, I combed over it pretty thoroughly, so we'll just leave them in the waiting room, and you know, it is what it is.
And we'll, we'll put the recording up that people will be able to see.
Correct. Uh, whoever, uh, Mr. Moss script is, I'm gonna keep lowering your hand. Um, if you do put your hand up again, you will be removed from the room. This is for LNC members only. So, uh, any LNC members, so Mr. Nikala, please unmute. And we are going to, so right now it is eight forty-seven PM Eastern Time. Any members, any members of the LNC that have questions for Mr. Nikala, please raise your hand. You don't have to do it immediately, but I will start from the top left-hand side of my screen and move across as I see hands come up. We will start with Mr. Weir.
Um. My question was actually for Mr. Heiss, so I'll see.
Okay, so we'll wait on that. Uh, Madam Secretary, please.
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Nikala, in a lot of the emails that we got, there seemed to be a great concern that um, Project uh, Decentral, Decentralized Revolution was um, in jeopardy. And the tone of it seemed to be that some people believed, and I do not want to put beliefs in their mouth, that it was dependent um, upon one person. So I'd like to ask eh, your intentions with regards to that program. And if to your knowledge, you've been on the LNC quite a while, anything similar had been done in the past, or is this something super, super unique? And I am salting the loaf a little bit because you are being put on the spot, but I seem to remember um, uh, the Frontier Project, for instance, but there may be other things that you recall.
Sure, thank you so much, Karen, and I appreciate you uh, letting me clear that up. And I can say off the bat, unequivocally, Project Decentralized Revolution is not in danger. I one hundred percent support PDR. As a matter of fact, in our August business meeting, we unanimously uh, accepted PDR into our strategy for the next two years, so PDR is here to stay. It's not going anywhere. I think it's a great plan. As a matter of fact, when I was Chair of LPF, we had Project First Step, which was somewhat similar to PDR in the sense that we're looking to expand our influence through winnable offices at the local level, so your city council, your county council, all that good stuff. Uh, so it's not something entirely new, but I'll give credit where credit is due. Uh, PDR is uh, well put together. Um, and uh, and it's a good strategy. It involves some single-issue coalitions. I think it's gonna be great for the party. Have we done this before? I believe we may have done it in the past. Was it Project Archimedes? I'm not, I, maybe I'm wrong. Um, so it's, it's not entirely unique, but it's the first time I think we've adopted local-level strategic uh, elections as a priority for the LNC. So I think in that sense, it is somewhat unique. But uh, I do completely support PDR, and it will continue.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Mr. Ford?
Mr. Nikala, a question for you. What will you do, uh, and I'll have the same question for Michael, by the way. Um, what will you do to heal a clearly divided party, some of whom are newly divided because of the processes used tonight?
Well, that's a great question. I think our party's been divided for a long time. Um, I think not cozying up to the Republican Party is probably a good first step in uniting the Libertarian Party and showing people that we're a unique brand that's worth investing in. We're not the JV team for the GOP, nor are we the JV team for the Democrats. We are libertarians. That's why we're here. Um, as far as the division, in my opinion, if you're seventy, eighty percent on board, welcome in. If we can get you in on a single-issue coalition, and you find yourself treading water, maybe you tip, put your toe in, you like Libertarian Party, come in. But there's definitely been a culture, um, and I think it starts at the top, where people respect each other, they expect professionalism, they expect people to work together, um, and the results-driven, and I think if you can, eh, if I can uh, bring that to the table, I think that'll be a good first step. And of course, you know, I'm, i- it's a libertarian party. There's some people that disagree. There's people, you know, on, on multiple sides of the equation, and I, I certainly would welcome all their input into how the party moves forward. Um, but ultimately, my, my major focus is making sure the board works together in a way that is cohesive, unified, and efficient.
You mean like tonight with s- some fairly arbitrary rulings?
Uh, uh, I mean, I don't know what to say. We, we, everybody voted. It's a body process, and we're here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Lamb?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I am very excited that you have chosen to run for this position. I appreciate your work with Wendy's. I'm a nurse case manager and have quite a few of your claimants through your corporation, so I, I appreciate the business. Uh, I am very interested, though. I mean, again, I, I do appreciate your opinion regarding Project Decentralized Revolution. I, I've seen some pushback that it is essentially the molten maneuver. I don't really give a any kind of crap regarding what it's called. I think it's important for us as libertarians to try and get elected at the local level. Of course, you know, I was able to do so here in, in my area. Uh, so I, I really just wanted to ask specifically uh, how you intend to help those of us that are running this, to get more people elected, and specifically, will you run for local office? Because we are still actively recruiting, so in your area, will you help us in our efforts on the CSC to get another candidate on the ballot?
Yeah, certainly. I, I wish your claimants would have opted for the baked potato and the, and the chicken salads are, they're very good. Um, but uh, yeah, to answer your question, you know, how do we support local-level candidates? Well, it starts with fundraising, number one. It starts with making money, which is something we've been on a downward trajectory for the past several years. Same thing with membership. They're kind of two sides of the same coin. And um, you know, I, I do have plans for both. I, I uh, fundraising, number one, is, we, you know, we need money. I, I do plan on seriously considering selling the headquarters and using that money to uh, get a full-time uh, professional fundraiser, someone who's been in the industry for a long time, and I have a couple leads on that. Uh, we need outside help. We need professional help uh, with our fundraising, absolutely. Uh, we need to make sure staff has their data cleaned up and that we're using that data um, on directed campaigns, on you know, using it for social media, using it in ways to get in people's face, go through the data to try to pick people up, put them into certain categories for single-issue coalitions, for renewals, for all that stuff. And I know the data's been an issue for quite a long time now, and, and I certainly would love to give some of our staff more hours, give them support. Um, but it requires money. And uh, and that needs to be our number-one priority. Once we get enough money in and we're fundraising, I'd love to continue voter gravity. I'd love to give candidates more tools. I'd love to hire maybe a political uh, a, a, a political point person on staff, a political director, if you want to call it that, uh, to help us strategize. But primarily to work on the lower levels, you know, it's, it's about resources, about, about getting the state affiliates, uh, the resources they need, and I am a past candidate. I did run for Key West District Four. I'm very involved in my, my local city. I, I volunteer. I, I do different things uh, all over. I go to board meetings, so I'm, I'm definitely interested in running for office again, and I know what it's like to be on the ground, so I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much, and yeah, please be in contact with our committee. We would love to help you with your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Uh, Ms. Yena Scavitch?
Yes, um, Mr. Nikala, and I will be asking this of both candidates. Um, for you as a standing member, eh, a current member of the LNC, are there any conflicts of interest that you have not um, declared on our potential conflict list?
No, I, I can't think of anything. I did play with the idea of turning headquarters into a Wendy's. I think it's in a really good spot, but uh, uh, you know, I have nowhere to put the drive-through, so no, no conflicts of interest on my end.
Thank you. Do we get, if, if that happened, do we get free Frosties?
We, we will, and our frosting machine's never broken.
Thank you, Ms. Yena Scavitch. Uh, Mr. Vincent?
Uh, yeah, Stephen, um, I would just like to ask if you would remain committed to um, Project Decentralized Revolution and all the staff that are working to effectuate that.
The answer is yes. Yeah, I, I do plan on keeping Mr. Heiss's contract going, and uh, with the blessings of the board, input from the board, I, I wanna see him continue to act out his vision as the architect for Project Decentralized Revolution. So the answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Watkins?
Yes, uh, sort of a two-part-ish question, but um, was using the LP's leverage to secure Ross Ulbricht's freedom an example of cozying up to the Republican Party? And whether or not you do think is the case, was it bad? And also, who are your connections to kind of keep this um, these relationships going?
That's a really good question. Um, you know, Lynn has been in the movement for a very long time. I know she's worked with us for a very long time. I think someone like Donald Trump is, it's, 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 it's something that comes up. It's like Haley's comment. It only happens so often. It was a really unique opportunity. I give Angela McCardle full credit uh, for her work getting, getting Ross free. She deserves that credit. It's an amazing thing that she did. I don't think that is an example of cozying up to the Republican Party. Uh, I think that having conversations with Republicans or Democrats is not a bad thing, but we have to remember that we're in an adversarial relationship with those parties and their leadership and their candidates. Uh, the same way the United States and Russia are adversaries, or Russia, or US and China, we're adversaries. We're not friends. We may work together. It may look like, you know, we do certain things or deals or whatever in the background, you know, maybe somebody's not gonna run up, run against uh, Thomas Massey or Justin Amash if he decides to run again. Um, I understand those decisions, and I, I'm, I'm not afraid or opposed to having conversations with people in leadership. I do it all the time. There's only twenty-six registered libertarians in Key West, so obviously I have to talk with people on all kinds of sides, and you know, we have great conversations, and we get things done, so I'm not against that whatsoever. Angela has stated that she wishes to give some of these relationships, pass them on to the next Chair, if she's open to that. I'd love to meet these people. I'm not gonna tell them to F off or anything like that. I'd love to have a conversation, if they're willing to have it, and see if there's opportunity to work together uh, in a way that is, you know, drives with the board and is a board decision, but it's not bad to talk. I'll talk to anybody. Um, but, but the bottom line is, we're the Libertarian Party. We're for libertarians. Sending out an honorary membership to Donald Trump is probably one of the worst things you could ever do as Chair. Um, you know, these, those types of decisions just make us look weak. It makes us look unpalatable. And quite frankly, why wouldn't you join the GOP if you like Donald Trump? You'd probably get more power, and they're in power pretty often, so it just doesn't make us palatable. It's like if the CEO of Wendy's came out and said, you know what? Burger King is great. You should really go eat at Burger King. They're the best. Eh, we would fire that person, right? Um, so these things have to be taken into consideration, and you know, ultimately, what we do with these parties, it's, it's a board decision if we you know, decide to talk to these people or whatever, but I hope that answers your question.
Uh, just that, eh, you didn't answer if, who your connections were to keep these relationships open, specifically who?
I don't know who all the relationships, who, who is all encompassed by the relationships that Angela has. Uh, I, I have talked to some people in the Kennedy campaign over the past few months, uh, some people, you know, when this JFC was going out, I was doing my due diligence. I got into contact with a libertarian who was on the campaign down in Texas, and we talked for a little bit. Um, but other than that, uh, I don't have any connections to the Trump campaign. I don't have any connections to the RFK, you know, Junior in team, so I don't have those connections. But I'd certainly be willing to uh, talk to them if they want to talk to me. But it doesn't mean we're, you know, we're friends, but we can definitely talk.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Uh, I'm gonna, so I'm really, I'm gonna skip to Ms. Hayes because uh, Ms. Harlos did already ask a question, uh, if that's alright, I mean, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Hayes, uh, then Mr. Bost, and then we'll circle back around, so everyone gets a first go-around before we keep, but we can keep going as, as, as much as possible, so Ms. Hayes?
All right, Mr. Nikala, I'm gonna ask um, something of a controversial question, um, and it's gonna kind of be multi-parted. Number one is um, what, in, in, without giving too much information, are you financially secure outside of the LP?
My day job is I run fourteen restaurants plus a movie theater, uh, twelve Wendy's, Dairy Queen, and a full-service restaurant. We just expanded two new stores on the Wendy's front, actually last month. We uh, we also are expanding the full-service restaurant. Um, that's my day job. I do administration. I do management. I've been in the restaurant business since I was fifteen years old, probably. I've been in the restaurant business since I was fifteen years old, probably even younger actually, cause, you know, child labor and all, uh, and all, uh, parents put you into. You know, you're pretty, pretty much working. You're not getting paid, right? Um, so I've been in, I've been in business for a very long time, very, very many years, and I'm good at what I do. Um, Wendy's and other companies, you know, they're always wishing to expand. There's always, you know, banks give us a clean bill of health. That's how we get loans. So clearly we're, we're making money and we're in the green, especially in places where not everybody is. You know, a lot of people are down right now to the economy and, and we're up. So I think that says a lot about the way that I handle my businesses and. The strength of our businesses, the strength of my managers, the strength of our crew, the training, the consistency, uh, the product, the, the, the infrastructure. All of that goes into consideration. Um, so to, to answer your question. I wouldn't be here if I was in a situation where I felt that my family's future or my business's future would be jeopardized. Because I'd be spending too much time here and not managing my businesses. My, my businesses are well-run. Uh, I have money, you know, to take care of myself and my family. And do what needs to be done. And, uh, you know, I don't want anything from the party. I'm, I'm here to serve. I'm here to help. I wouldn't be doing this for ten-plus years if I didn't believe in the mission. I'd honestly rather be on the beach if that was the case and hanging out with my kid. She turned three years old today and just dealing with family. But instead I'm here in front of a room full of a hundred-plus people and libertarian movement. Offering myself up, uh, to, you know, I'm no Moses or anything, but I'm pretty damn good at my job and what I do. And I'd love to help lead this party forward.
Uh, my second part to that question was have you and Mr. Heiss been in contact over the last week or so? Um, discussing these various options regarding Project Decentralized Revolution, um, his run for chair. Um, and, and just sort of general, um, pieces about each of your visions.
Yeah, I, uh, I spoke with, with Mr. Heiss a few times over the past few weeks and, you know, he's explained to me PDR and. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sold on PDR. He can't sell me anymore. I think it's a, a great vision. Um, and we've talked a little bit, you know, here and there and. And, and, you know, we, we can continue to talk and continue to work together. Um, and, and try to see a way forward for how do we best support PDR and its future and its development and its success? Because, uh, we certainly could use it as a party. Um, so yeah, we have been in contact a little bit, but, uh. Um, intermittently throughout the last few weeks.
And my third question is what committees are you currently serving on? And can you give, um, everybody just a little bit of an overview of what your role within those committees are?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm currently on the EPCC, which is the Employment Policy and Compensation Committee. I've been on that committee for three terms. I can tell you when I started, it was really rough, the way we were handling things, I'll be honest, but since then, we've done a lot to streamline it. I got us on paycheck system. Uh, we were able to get the, the full employee manual going. Uh, we were able to, an employee manual by state, by the way, and there's different state laws and based on, you know, where you are. So the employment manual, um, we were able to, you know, work with, on contracts, draft contracts, draft employment agreement, agreements. Uh, we do stuff with KPI, which I wish to do more of. Um, we handle disputes, internal disputes. So if there's a problem with a, with a staff member, we, we handle that. There's a process that I, I actually drafted. I drafted all the EPCC processes. Because before we had none, so it was all kind of up in the air. So we laid everything out. And that's a document on the website. Uh. We, we've done, we've done a hell of a lot over the last six years and.
As a quick follow-up to that, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, yeah.
But just because you mentioned that, I feel like this is important. Did you, were you involved in contracting Mr. Hayes?
Um, I was not involved. That was a chair's decision.
Okay, I just wanted you to clarify that because I think the members might have.
But I didn't support it at the time. And still do.
Oh, and I'm sorry, um, to my, that continuing your answer, uh, your, uh, your other committee, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, my other committee is the, uh, so I, I, last meeting, I made a motion to create. A, uh, it's an ethic, basically an ethics and behavioral standards committee. That's the name. And this committee is designed to in, imprint our policy manual. What the behavioral standards of a professional organization are, uh, which is something we've been lacking for a very long time and we desperately need. So for instance, you know, we, so I interviewed, you know, Debbie Mason. She's, she's a professional in the business. I know her from down here and she does like. Board meeting, training and stuff like that. I had her on and others, and we workedshopped and we got a lot of great data that we're hoping to have at the next, uh, meeting. I actually chaired, I chaired this committee because I think it's time that the board acts professionally. We hold each other accountable and we all agree to a set, set of standards. That, you know, that, that's our gold standard. You come in, you, you, you agree to it. The first thing you do as an LNC members, you agree, these are the standards. If, if I don't abide by these standards, then what is the process for discipline? So we came up with a disciplinary process. Uh, and what our options are and we, you know, we, we talked to a parliamentarian about how that jives with the rules and what that would look like. Um, so all these things are really important and, and align with my vision of making this a professional board that's results-driven. That we're not infighting, we're working together, uh, we work as a team, we make team decisions and everybody has input. And nobody disrespects each other. There's no, he said, she said, go on social media and talk shit. Uh, none of that. I'm not gonna, that, that's not gonna fly anymore. Especially for me, it's as chair, it's not gonna fly.
Thank you. I'm sorry, as, as like a second part to that question, could you explain your understanding of fiduciary duty? To the board?
Fiduciary duty is, you know, we, when we sign on as LNC members, our duty becomes to the board, the LNC. It's not to the members. A lot of people think it's the members or the delegates or what? No, it's to the LNC as an entity, as a legal entity, as a board. That is where our fiduciary duty resides. So everything we do, once you put that hat on, is tied to our fiduciary duty to the Libertarian National Committee. Its best interests have to be taken into consideration at all times and. That, to me, that means that you have to be a hundred percent dedicated as a board member. You can't take the hat off. You can't decide, well, today I'm not an LNC. No, you're always an LNC member. Once you take that position and with that, there comes a lot of responsibility. Uh, and a lot of that is reflected in the ethics committee and what we're working on. You can't, you know. You have to be aligned with the board all times. You don't relitigate. You don't go outside and talk to the media and say, oh, this is why I disagree. You don't, uh, you know, do things that are good for you, but not good for the board. You don't, you know, you don't disparage the party in any way or make the party look weak. And to me, that's, that's, you do what's best for the board at all times. Uh, my dad always told me, you know, you always put the business first. And he's a hundred percent right. And with the LNC, you put the LNC first. So that's what fiduciary duty means to me.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Nikala. I know that you're no Moses, but we will let your people go if it comes to it. Uh, Mr. Boston, then, uh, Madam Sec.
Uh, Mr. Weir didn't speak in before, so he goes before me.
Yes, uh, Mr. Nikala, uh, besides.
Oh, I didn't see his hand up. Sorry. That, it'll be Mr. Boston here, then Madam Sec. Oh, hold on, let's, uh, just so that everyone knows the order here. I didn't see the hands up because there's, I'm getting alerts, um, whatever. So it's gonna be Mr. Boss, Mr. Weir, then. Mr. Watkins. So, Mr. Boss?
All right, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure I was having some trouble on my end.
Um, yes.
Mr. Nikala, uh, besides, uh, many calls for either yourself or no, either Mr. Amash or Mr. Heiss. Um, and for, there was certainly calls for someone outside of the board. Outside of the current LNC as well as, uh, someone that, uh. At least until an investigation is completed, uh, what would your answer be to those concerned that we have not done any investigation? Of the extent of, uh, uh. What may be going on with the finances or conflicts of interest and the calls for someone outside of the LNC, which I do believe were overwhelming.
So the question was, what do I think of the calls for an outside audit firm? And then I heard.
Uh, no, 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 uh, for a chair candidate to come from someone that is not on the LNC.
I don't really have much thoughts on that. I, I think that we're a, a board. And the delegates elected us to make the best decisions for the board. And so in my opinion, the LNC knows what's best for itself and, uh, can make decisions as we were. Endowed by the, the delegates at convention in order to make. So I think it's really up to us what we do in anything. Uh, I don't think it's up to people emailing, uh, repetitively, you know, what their opinions are. I think it's up to the board. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it's our decision. And whatever that decision is, goes.
And I will, I will add, I don't know if you want to change your answer. Those calls were on multiple platforms and bipartisan. Or all partisan, I, I should say.
Okay, I'm not sure what to make of that question, but I'll just reiterate that whatever decision the board makes is the best decision for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boss. Uh, Mr. Weir, then actually we'll. Mr. Dar because he is. A little bit longer, uh, and I'm sure it's getting tired. Oh, let me, give me just a minute. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna turn off my video for just a minute, just to make sure. I, I think I'm getting a little bit of lag on my end. So apologies. I'll go with Mr. Weir, then Mr. Dar. So Madam Sec will keep her hand up a little bit, her virtual hand up a little bit longer. Hopefully it doesn't get tired.
Mr. Nikala, what do you think of the Free State Project's, uh, libertarian concentration strategy? And is that something that you would be interested in adopting, um, you know, as a, as a national, uh, concept?
Well, um, we have libertarians all around the country where they may dwell and. I, I have a lot of respect for the Libertarian Party of New Hampshire and the guys over there. They're some of the most well-read guys I've, I've met in the movement. I can tell you that the Free Staters and the guys in New Hampshire, very, very smart, very, very well-read. Um. I, I, I gotta, I gotta candid to you guys. I think that, you know, doing the whole Free State thing, getting people to move up there, you know. Uh, cool. Good on you. I think it's awesome. I actually got introduced to the Free State Project in twenty. I think it was twenty-twelve at Paulfest in Tampa is when I met the first Free Stater and they gave me a little bookmark, uh, to think about moving to New Hampshire. And, uh, New Hampshire's great. New Hampshire's cool. You guys are doing your thing. I think that's great. Uh, I'd love to make the conquer public free again down here in Key West. We succeeded where others failed. And, you know, I would hope that we can make this community a shining example of libertarianism down here. Um, and, and, and I think we're already very much a libertarian city and I think we can do a lot more to affect that. And, and, and that's where, where my focus is gonna be locally is making that happen. Um, so anybody that wants to have a, a free conquer public or free whatever, you know, your state or your municipality project is. If you've got buddies that want to move in, I think it's a great idea. Um, I don't think it's a, a national co- committee decision, but I think if people want to do that. Uh, on their own, then, you know, I, I'll certainly promote it, you know, as chair.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. We will move to Mr. Dar now. Mr. Dar?
Yes, uh, Mr. Nikala, um, who did you support publicly for president in the general election? That shouldn't be a controversial question, but it might be.
I publicly supported Chase Oliver and, uh, Mike Turmott. Uh, I've got to know both gentlemen very well throughout the years. I was region rep for R2 and met, uh, Chase down in Georgia. He's a, he's a great guy. He's a hardcore activist. He's, he's also very spark, smart, very well spoken, uh, spoken. Um, Turmott, same thing. I actually met Turmott for the first time at, in anti-COVID, uh, like law rally. Like we were burning masks and it was an anti, you know, mandatory vaccine thing and people came from all over and he spoke and I got to spoke. And Mike's a great guy. He's a hard worker. Um, you know, he's run for office multiple times. So both of them have my utmost respect. And I want to thank them for the work they've put in serving Libertarian Party. Thank you, Mr. Dar. Uh, Madam Sec, go ahead.
Okay, well, um, Ms. Hayes opened the, opened the door for, for multiple, uh, multiple questions. Gonna start kind of with a comment and then something said. I'll try, I'll, I'll try to give them to you all at once, Stephen, then you can ask me if I missed anything. Um, there was a comment earlier about no current LNC. Members being chair. Um, I will, will note that those people were saying that pretty much said also no current staff as well. And I don't think we're looking here to disqualify both candidates, uh, that are here before us. Um, as Florida chair, I'd like to know, um. How you'd been a unifying, um, chair. I know Florida having, being, still consider myself a Floridian. Um, it, it is, is in fact very diverse. And if you have any kind of a. A reputation, um, as some of us do, for going on social media and colloquially shitposting. And, you know, just stirring people up and what your opinion is on that second part of the question. Dar stole. I wanted to know who you endorsed for president. Um, but there's a, a. I, I would like to know, this is just the second part of the question. Um, i- i- is the role of the chair to be a Moses or hero figure? Or is that actually, um, credit and recognition should get spread out downward? Um, that whether the, the chair is a ruler or a collaborator? And is it noble for the chair to break the party rules?
Okay, there's a lot of questions there. So I'm gonna start with the first question, which is during my tenure as Libertarian Party of Florida Chair. Was I a uniter? Was I unifier? And how did that work out? So in twenty nineteen, I became chairman of Libertarian Party of Florida. I was on the board since twenty fourteen. And around twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one or so, I remember, uh, the Mises Caucus really got heated up in Florida and around the country. We had a lot of new members come in and it was great. Uh, it was great. We had a great convention. We had a lot of new faces. Uh, many of whom are still around. Some are still on this board today. Great guys, solid guys, solid guys and gals. Um, Salicia Slafter, who I, I knew in Key West, she was actually in my local affiliate. She was the chairwoman of the Mises Caucus at the time. Uh, we had a great relationship. Uh, you know, we, we work well together. She knew me, I know her. Uh, and, and I'll tell you, like. The, the guys that came in from the Mises Caucus, you know, your chair, they don't know you. They don't know why they should respect you. They don't know what your vision is. And I think given enough time, they, you know, we all work well together. We were able to get stuff done together. Uh. You know, they respected me as chair and, uh, and we, we had a really good, uh, couple of years with a board that was Mises and non-Mises. So you have these people in the party that have been around for a long time. They've done substantial work in the party for many years. And they can best, they can bestow knowledge, institutional knowledge on the new people coming in. And we had some old timers in there getting advice to the new, the, the new folk and they ended up really liking to get together, uh, liking each other and coming together. Um, and I think it comes from the chair. I, I think, you know, there's a certain presence the chair has, I guess, is kind of a way to say it. But I think at least for me personally, you know, if there's a problem, you address it. If somebody's got beef with this person, you nip it in the bud. Um, you get people working together. You kind of have to work with the chemistry of folks to make sure it's gonna work out. But the most important thing is having a unified vision because I've got people at work that they might not like each other, but they have to work together. And you have to fix that. You have to make sure that this is the goal. The goal is to do X, Y, and Z. We're all working towards the same goal. You guys have to work to, together to get that goal. And I think sociologically speaking, when people don't have goals, they tend to digress into groups. And they start to seek self-interest and then there's just fighting. Then there's no real objective and then, you know, you don't get anything done. And the same thing is for businesses isn't politics. You have to have goals. Uh, I recommended bringing Debbie, Debbie Mason in in August. You did a great board training with the entire board. And I felt at that moment when we, you know, you basically came in and decided these are our goals for the next two years. I felt that was a very good moment for the board that we felt like, hey, you know, we maybe, we don't all agree with each other or like each other or love each other. But we all just agreed on what the goals are and we all had pretty much the same goals. And that was a really beautiful moment because it made me realize that the board is bought into the same mission. And the mission isn't to fight each other. The mission, the mission is what we put on paper that day. And that's, you know, that's something I think that, uh, is. In, something that I think is very important as chair is to make sure your team has a mission and they're unified on that mission, whatever it is. So that answers the first question. I think your second question was something about social media and infighting. And I'll just go back to, and say that with the ethics committee, that's gonna stop. That's gonna stop. Once that, once our. Policy manual amendments are put into place, I'll make sure we'll be enforcing that. There's nothing I can do about the rank and file members if, if they're fighting online, but I do think that. As a board, what we do trickles down, leadership trickles down. And I think you have to be a good example. And I think as a board, we can be a good example to our members of how we treat each other, how we respect each other, how we get shit done together.
There was one other thing. It, I, I come from a fundamentalist background, actually Calvary Chapel. And their pastors used to follow something called the Moses model, which ended up being a complete disaster. Actually, the Calvary Chapel of Florida's. which ended up being a complete disaster. Actually, the Calvary Chapel of Florida's um head pastor had to resign in shame from, you know, doing sexual sins and, and, and things of that nature. So I was wondering what you were thinking of like the Moses model in a nonprofit board where the chair like is parting the water and everyone else is, is, is just to fall in line or whether this is a collaborative um, uh effort in which everybody is accountable to everybody.
You know, I don't claim to be the smartest guy in the room. You know, I may know a lot about certain subjects, but we've got a lot of smart people on the board. And everybody has their expertise. Everybody has a different background. And the reason we're elected as a board and not just hey, we elect one guy and he does all the work, uh, is because you want to be able to leverage everybody's expertise and input. Because my, my idea might not be the best idea. I might have some good ideas, but I want to run it by the board. Uh, I want to make sure we have conversations. If I need help, I'm going to ask for help because I need help. I'm going to need help. I'm going to need other people's opinions. I need other people's counsel and advice. And likewise, I would also like to counsel and advise others uh as well, you know, where it's appropriate and where it's fit as chair. And one of the things I did in Florida is we had monthly informal board meetings. We just got in a room and there was no audience. There was no recording. We just talked about, hey, guys, this is where we're at with finances this month. Oh, my God, yeah, I actually, I actually have extra time. I can go on, you know, this committee or whatever, you know. So you're always brainstorming and coming up with new ideas or I'm an expert in social media marketing. Let me, you know, work on this and we'll, we'll get the message out, whatever the case is. I think that's so important. That's how I lead all my teams is, you know, I'm, I'm a teacher. I, I hold people accountable. I make sure things get done. But if they're not bought in, you know, then n- nothing gets done. So I guess to answer your question, it's, it's a team effort. It's a board effort. It's not just one guy. And I'm not Jesus Christ. I'm not Moses. I'm just a dude that's been doing this for a long time and I want to help this part.
You're just Florida man. That's what I'm hearing.
Florida man, man.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow. Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Uh, we will skip Mr. Watkins for right now. Mr. Nana has not yet asked a question. We'll circle back to Mr. Watkins. Mr. Nana?
Um, well, Mr. Watkins is the last question. I will just, I'll just see my time. I just wanted everybody to be aware that we've been on, we went a little over. So.
Yeah, we're, we're about three minutes away from forty minutes. That's fine. Like I said, I have, um, I, I have all night here and I want to make sure that everyone gets a fair shake. And so whenever we end here, we'll give at the very least that amount of time to, to Mr. Heiss. And if there's any, we can do outstanding questions at the end for either candidate. We don't have to just, you know, nip it in the bud right there, but I do want to get, make sure that everyone gets their fair shake. Mr. Uh, Watkins?
Yes, um, uh, Mr. Nikala, so you support PDR and the strategy we passed in Miami. Um, so I would like to ask, um, what is, what makes you believe that you are the uh best person currently to see that vision uh through and execute it? And what is specifically your plan to do so?
Absolutely. To successfully carry out PDR, you have to have money and we need to fundraise. We have to get a professional fundraiser on, as I've mentioned. Uh, we have to do the things we need to do to make sure the party stops bleeding uh capital so we can invest in projects like PDR and, and other things that we want to do and expanding staff and all those great things. I, I think I'm in a unique position to be able to make sure fundraising takes off as chair. I've, I fundraised over, you know, a hundred thousand dollars just, just myself. Um, I, I I network with people. I work with people that are very wealthy. I know how to talk to people. I know how to bring people in. Um, I know the the dynamics as far as the mechanics of the day-to-day on, you know, how boards work. I know, you know, what we need to do and I'm, and I'm looking forward to digging in even further to seeing what the opportunities are because being down in fundraising and being down in membership, it's a, it's a symptom. And, and sometimes there's multiple diseases you have to cure in order to get rid of all the symptoms. And I think unfortunately plagued by multiple diseases, some of it's just lack of money. Some of it, you know, you have to, you have to look in and you have to see where the opportunities are. What are we doing right? What are we not doing? What do we need to focus on? Uh, these are all discussions that we need to have. I've been on this board for ten years. I know the mechanics of the LNC. I know the mechanics of Libertarian Party business and affiliates and I've done Ronner. I've done that for a long time. I've done all the things. I've, I make money personally, you know, in the business world. Uh, that's going to be very important when you're looking to fund PDR. I'm putting the right people in the right place to do it, of course, and same thing for membership and, and all else. So uh, I think with that said, given my experience and my commitment to, to solve our problems, uh, I, I think I am the best suited person to make sure that PDR lives to complete its mission.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins and Mr. Nikala. Uh, so we are officially at the forty-minute mark. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Nikala? From the LNC at this time? Okay. Mr. Heiss, are you still with us? Thank you, Mr. Nikala, for answering uh those questions and, and uh, you had to go through a marathon there. So I appreciate your patience and, and willing to do that. Uh, Mr. Heiss, you're with us, correct?
I am here.
Fantastic. All right. LNC members, please raise your virtual hands. And we will go ahead and proceed with questions to Mr. Heiss. Uh, the first up here on the left-hand side is Ms. Harlos. Ms. Harlos?
Hi, thank you and thank you, Mr. Heiss. I noticed that your um opening speech was is certainly mentioned legitimate accomplishments of the former chair. Um, but to me, it went a bit overboard and I'm wondering your opinion um as to the depths or whatever of it. We have an investigatory committee for it, but there's public records already that at least to me um seem to indicate, and let's just take them as true for sake of argument, even if you don't think they're true. Um, what would you think if a chair after being told by the LNC that they did not wish to continue to have the appearance of nepotism? Um, the very next month, signed a contract without informing the LNC that the owner of the company was in fact their domestic partner, and there's a second part to that. Um, as chair, went and raised upwards of a, a million dollars that didn't go to the LNC that in fact went to elect candidates or candidate um and their supporters of another party. You, you don't, I'm asking if you do. I don't want to lead a question. Do you find that to be a breach of either the duty of fiduciary, the duty of care, or the duty of loyalty? All of those are in fact legal duties of this body. Thank you.
Sure, I'm just flat out not going to speculate on things that are under investigation uh or comment on them. And I think that uh asserting things like that or asserting guilt uh or things like that prior to an investigation, uh, if they end up being wrong, could end up actually being libelous. So uh, I am not going to be commenting on that. I don't think that's an appropriate question either.
Uh, okay, really quickly, let's, we're going to rein it in here. We're not going to comment on the appropriateness of questions or response. On this call, including the LNC, that while it is agendized for the reasons, the committee has not been formed. There's nothing currently under investigation, just to be clear. Okay, uh, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Hello, Mr. Heiss. Sorry, my, I was muted. Um, can you answer the same question I asked, Mr. Nikala? What is your financial situation independent of the LP?
Sure. So I, I'm working multiple jobs and uh I, however, though, I would not be doing chair unless I could do it full-time and full throttle. Uh, so you know, I do have the support of members of the party, donors to the party uh who want to see me carry out my vision full-time because they saw that the first time I did that, I was very, very effective uh at fundraising, at, at bringing people into the party, at carrying out and uh executing on my plans. So you know, they want to see that again. And uh, you know, so if I get the chair, I would, I would be carrying through with that.
I'm confused about what you mean by that. Are you saying that they would donate to you, to pay you to be chair?
Yeah, there, there are supporters that want to finance me to be chair because they're, they want to see this vision.
And why have they not donated to the party?
They are donors to the party, but I, I mean, I can't speak to all of their financial decisions either, but they are donors to the party.
They, would they be upping their donation to the party in addition to donating to you as chair?
I have no idea.
Okay, do you find that that conflicts at all with your duty to the, what were your duty to the LNC would be? Um, to take money from donors to finance your position as chair rather than allow that money to go to the LNC itself?
I don't think I'd be allowing anything. I think people fund what they want to fund, you know, so if they're already donors to the party, they're members, they're supporters. Uh, they want to see a chair be full-time to carry out a vision uh and support that vision. So I think that's great. I mean, I think, I think the fact that we have a membership that is so passionate about something like this that they would do that for me. Uh, you know, just the way they sent in hundreds of emails and support, uh, you know, I, I think that's great. And so I think as long as uh you are maintaining the fiduciary responsibility that was talked before and you are at the front of the line, carrying out that mission, that that's a great thing. We should want our chair to be full-time.
Sure. Um, would uh you be disclosing the names of all these donors on your conflict forum?
I would, I would disclose the names of all the donors as soon as the board disclosed the names of everyone that signs their checks.
Okay, that's a problem for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Uh, we will move on to Mr. Watkins.
Yes, Mr. Heiss, how do you view the culture of uh the, the LNC specifically? Do you think it's healthy or unhealthy? And if you h- h- how would you plan on having a cohesive uh LNC if, if elected?
I'll answer that. I'm going to kind of also answer the question that I'm sure is coming of like unifying the party, like how, how would I intend to unify the party? Um, as far as the culture of the board, I mean, I think it's on display pretty good tonight. Uh, you know, shutting down debate. Uh, you know, shutting down uh comments from the public, talking about how, oh, well, we already know what uh the the vibe is and then not mentioning what was in the, all the hundreds of emails and all that kind of stuff. There just seems to be like a, a I don't know, a reticence to actually hear from the members or like give any credibility to the members. Uh, and I, I also think there's just a lack of, and I want to credit Steve for this point, a, a lack of uh direction. Like if you don't have goals, uh then it, it's harder to find a direction. It's hard to create a map from here to there. Um, and so it is great that those goals were set, but I'm not exactly seeing any action from the board to uh carry out those goals, which again is why working with staff has been absolutely uh eye-opening because, you know, on the board, it's just like nightmare after nightmare, negativity after negativity. And then you get into the staff meetings and it's good news after good news after good news after good news. And everybody talks about the board stuff, but nobody ever talks about the, the staff stuff. So I find that to be very unfortunate. Uh, so how I would intend to uh unify the party is how I had already done it before, frankly, is uh, I, I don't think you can unify for the sake of unification. I think what you have to do is uh the best that you can do is uh cast a vision, be at the front of the lines, executing on that vision. Do your best to find a place for everybody to be in that vision uh and uh let, let the fruits of acting that vision out speak for themselves and motivate people to come in behind you. And then to the extent that people don't want to be involved or, or don't want to uh, you know, get on board with that mission, then you know, encourage them to, to form their own vision and compete. And we have a friendly competition of those visions uh that is based on productivity and expanding the interest of the party. Uh, and I think I have done that with what I have uh with the strategies that I've built, not just Project Decentralized Revolution, but the issue coalition strategies and the teams that I've already stood up, the various teams that I've already stood up and in the I'm in the process of standing up uh that cover issues and give people multiple methods of expanding liberty in real life, whether it's electorally or legislatively.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins and Mr. Heiss. We'll move over. Uh, Mr. Weir, have you gone this round? I don't believe you have.
I have not, no.
We'll go, uh, Mr. Weir.
Yeah, Mr. Heiss, uh, you may have already answered this, um, but I was curious, um, you know, this is kind of a two-part question. So the first part would be, um, you know, if, if you were elected as chair, uh, you had mentioned somebody potentially funding you well to, in order to do that. Um, does that mean that you would be uh forfeiting your contract with the LP?
Oh, yes, absolutely. A hundred percent. I don't want any, yeah, I would just be, and just to be clear, I have a plan with that too. Uh, I um, and this is, I think a key difference between myself and Steve. So if I can just answer this before he asks the next one. Um, absolutely, a hundred percent. I would renounce, be renouncing my salary. I would not be accepting any money or taking any contracts from the party or seeking to do so. Um, uh, and a key difference that I have with Steve is that I actually don't think the thing that we need to do is hire a fundraiser. Uh, I think the complexities of our situation are, are too much uh to hire a fundraiser and then just kind of drop them into the data and that we do have and say, all right, get to work. I, I think it's a lot more complex than that. I would want to make a hire um and, and, and in effect, it would help fundraising. What I would want to hire, I would want to aggregate my salary with the with the uh salary that was cut from the, the, the call contract and hire somebody to oversee our initiatives because I believe that fundraising uh is based on value. And I think we have to offer value to people, especially people who are high dollar uh and successful people who have high standards for themselves that led them to be successful. We have to really come to them with a, with a palette of uh, of value offers in the form of an electoral strategy, of a ballot access strategy, of a legislative strategy that are active. So I would want to hire somebody to oversee those initiatives because I believe that the initiatives being volunteer efforts are the single greatest point of failure. So if we have somebody working them and making sure they're productive, making sure they're producing good news, you know, defend the guard past three state committees this week. Uh, we haven't even talked about it. So like things like that that we then take to the donors, I think that is how we do it. And in effect, the fund, the, the fundraising should be driven by the chair. I think the chair should then take that, be the networker in chief and try to be the biggest fundraiser in the party. And that would be my goal. Uh, is to be that networker in chief, especially given the fact that, you know, Steve had said he didn't have the connections. Well, I do. You know, I have the support of, of the biggest voices in the, the libertarian movement who have been huge drivers of uh, of recruitment. I, I'm so excuse me, I'm friends with Dave Smith. I'm uh maintaining a friendship with Angela who has carved out a network uh into the halls of power that uh, that include RFK, Tulsi Gabbard and Cash Patel. Uh, and we should be looking to uh expand into those networks, increase our power and influence so that we can use it for liberty. And I think I have those in, in ways that others don't.
Yeah. So my, the second part to that question was I, and I appreciate you answering that, by the way. Um, I just wanted to ask, so you, since you had mentioned you're going to be funded by, you know, people that are obviously Libertarian Party members, but they'll basically be saying like, you know, hey, we'll front your bills if you do this. Um, doesn't that kind of mean that you're going to be um obligated to uphold their interests since they're kind of funding your, your agenda? Um, are you willing to kind of just?
No, because the, the money would be upfront and uh I have made it very clear what my intentions would be. And I think uh, if, since I serve at the pleasure of the board, if I was somehow, you know, one day hyper focusing on Project Decentralized Revolution and issue coalitions and data and all this stuff, and then all of a sudden I'm doing something crazy, I think it would be obvious. Uh, and then the board would have that option to remove me and, and uh, you know, do what they had to do at that point anyway. So, no, I don't think so. I think the whole point is to uh, one, have the money upfront so that it can't be like a a breadcrumb trail to do what you're describing and uh, and it's an investment into my vision. And, and again, I, I, yeah, good, so.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you answering my question.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weir. Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Uh, we are going to skip Ms. Harlos for right now, uh, just because she kicked us off. We'll go to Mr. Lamb and then Mr. Dar and Miss Ginnis Scavitch and we'll circle back around. So the, the virtual hand will, will, will get tired again. Mr. Lamb?
Hello, Mr. Heiss. I'm very excited to speak with you. Unfortunately, I, like I indicated earlier, was not looking forward to you being nominated or anyone, quite frankly. So I, I just would like to hear more specific, more specifically uh why that you think you would be a better chair over Mr. Amash, who had been floated quite heavily on social media. Of course, we've spoken with Mr. Nikala. I think we've heard from him quite extensively. Uh, so please, if you don't mind answering.
Absolutely. Yeah. So um, going off of some of Amash's public statements around the idea of running for chair, you know, he has this concept of well, we need to make the party electorally successful. And I suspect what he means by that is, is federal level elections. And uh, we've been saying that and trying that for fifty years and getting one percent or less over and over and over again, or, you know, maybe we'll, we'll get five percent here or there or something like that with, with some of our uh federal level candidates. And I just don't think that that is a strategy that has any uh any data to suggest that there's success in it. And I think that given that we are a third party and that we have very, very, very scarce resources in time, energy, money and manpower uh that we have to economize those resources uh into the highest value propositions that we could possibly get. And when you examine the data, uh, what those high value propositions are, are very, very clear. Uh, and that is local level elections with teeth. Uh, that is the issue coalitions and that is ballot access. And so we can maximize our efforts around those things that have a consistent pattern of success across time within the Libertarian Party. Uh, and, and then use that to create the value that we then uh use to inform a data strategy to target big uh donors and then start to create the, cultivate the networks there. Um, you know, just a commentary on fundraising. I think, I don't think there's going to be a magic bullet for fundraising and I don't think uh the fundraising is going to be feel uh fixed anytime soon because unfortunately I think uh fundraising can only be, is only going to be fixed with, at the speed of relationship cultivation, which is why I think the chair needs to be needs to be full time to be the networker in chief. So kind of bringing that back around to your Justin Amash question, while I think Justin Amash could certainly raise the profile in a sense, I also have serious, serious questions about his, his tactical outlook and, and his strategic outlook, given that he went from being, you know, the vanguard of political liberty in our country to, you know, being out of office and, and standing by the Mueller report. And now all of a sudden, he's out of office. Thomas Massey is one of the most popular legislators in the country. Rand Paul was the chair of the Homeland Security Commission or Committee, sorry. And, you know, so they're gaining in power and influence while he has waned. And at the same time, the Libertarian Party itself has gained in power and influence and is freeing prisoners, which I don't think is a strategy that he saw value in and would want to go backwards from that. I would not. So I think there's a lot of reasons there. But not to say that there wouldn't be benefits and that I don't have the utmost respect for Justin Amash. I think, I, I think Justin Amash could be best served at leading the party by being a candidate and, and is probably the person best positioned in the country to win a federal race as a, as a libertarian.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Thank you, Mr. Heiss. We will move over to Mr. Dar. Mr. Dar, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, Mr. Heiss, same question that I asked of Mr. Nikala. Who did you support publicly for president in the general election?
Sure. Yeah, I, I supported Trump and voted Libertarian down the ballot. I think voted, I think voting is a tactical value, right? And how that worked in my state was that the people that I voted for down ballot did more for ballot access than president. So in effect, I voted to free Ross and I got what I wanted out of that because of the new strategy that was in place. And I've never gotten anything for voting for, you know, in, in terms of liberty in real life from voting for president before. So I, I understand the, the criticism of that or how that might sound strange. But I, I think it hurts the Libertarian Party very badly to, and to be a, to demand absolute partisanship. And I don't think it's an attractive message to people that we would want to bring into the party. Because first of all, we don't want them to be partisans. You know what I mean? Like we're asking them to leave the Democrat Party. We're asking them to be the Republican Party. So if we say, hey, you can't be a partisan over there, but you have to be a partisan over here. Only when you're a partisan over here, there might only be one or two people on your ballot and there's a very low chance of you winning. It's just not a very attractive message. I don't think it does much to build trust among society, which is something that we don't talk enough about. We talk a lot about our principles and stuff like that, but we have got to build trust in society to effectuate those principles. So I, I think the, the partisan demand is, is very unattractive to that.
And as a question, I thought as others ask question, as far as you're needing to self-fund yourself through fundraising, how will you handle the inherent conflict of interest of needing to fundraise for yourself and the party at the same time?
Well, one, I would already have those donors at hand, so I wouldn't be out fundraising for myself. It would be an agreement that is already being worked out if this opportunity should present itself. You know, so that would already be, because the whole point isn't for me to overburden myself and have to worry over here and, and take care of the party over there. It's to fuel my vision. So in that sense, I would be full time. And I would be continuing on the data research that I've already been doing, the data program that has already been in place and continuing that to start to form relationships with the targets that have already come out of the data research. And I'd be happy to talk more about that if, if anyone wants to ask me about it.
Thank you, Mr. Dar. And thank you, Mr. Heiss. We will move to Ms. Yennis Scavitch.
Okay, Mr. Heiss, I have a few questions. The first, you know, being that I am on the E P C C, I'm wondering if you get, if you are elected chair this evening, have you given any thought to who will, and, and you said that you would be, you know, resigning from your contractor position? How your functions would be picked up, given our limited staff at this time and limited funds?
Yeah, I, I described this earlier, just the way that Steve said that he wants to make a hire for like a professional fundraiser. I also would want to make a hire, but not, not for a fundraiser. I would want to hire somebody to oversee our initiatives because this might be a deeper, this goes into something deeper than, than the question might seem. Essentially, what I have built out is an iterative process to build out the, the fundraising program. Because I fundamentally believe, as I said earlier, that I think that our fundraising problems as a party are too complex for one person to just kind of come in and say, oh, well, who was given money three years ago and isn't now? You know, that person might be liable to get their head screwed off by, by whoever they called. I think it's too complex. So essentially what I went out to do was create the support materials that make volunteering for the initiatives as easy as possible. Those initiatives then serve as the food, the value that we offer for the fundraising. So then the, the game was to create the skeleton for all of these initiatives and then get them stood up so that we have a, a palette of, of value to offer to the fundraisers or the prospective donors. And then from there, work the data program so that we can target high dollar donors and go really deep into research of their, their wealth background so that we can create a profile and find a, a pattern within their data to then form the basis of a marketing campaign to those people. And then I, as the chair, would be the one going to them. So yes, I would be doing that to, I would hire somebody to oversee those initiatives. Because again, I think the initiatives being a volunteer effort is the greatest single point of failure and also is the value that upholds the fundraising in the first place. If you're not offering value, you're not going to be getting money from high value people.
And do you think this would be never revenue neutral in terms of the amount of money that we were spending toward Freedom Calls?
I'm not exactly sure how much money it was spending towards Freedom Calls, but I think I've, I've heard that the contract was like $4,000 a month. So that comes out to what, like $48,000 a year? Let's put it this way. I have with, and I have a pile more of, of data research to do. I have already identified 160 people who would be targets for max value donations. Now, that's not to say we're going to get all of them and it's going to move at the speed of relationship cultivation. But if we get even 5% of that, we are going to be, you know, five times and six times in the number of max donors that we have now. One max donor is 41,000. So yes, I think if we, if we do this and it works, that we would be making more money. I just think it's going to be, again, at the speed of relationship cultivation.
Okay. Have you implemented any of these, you know, initiatives to receive max donors at this time?
Uh, yeah. So I'm in the process of standing up the last two of them. And, and again, the whole point in this iterative process is you want to have them stood up so that you can provide the value. So really going to the donors within this framework is kind of the last thing. You have to set up all of that framework. So I have stood up the, the, the candidate support team. Aaron Lamb is chairing it as the most successful elected in the country as far as I'm aware of. You know, so he is doing that. I had elected or recruited about 40 people to help make phone calls to all of the past elected libertarians to get, to try to hit the goals that you guys had passed in, in August of, to try to get as many number of people running for local level office. He's also working to call up all of the elected libertarians that we have that serve in these types of seats, these, these with teeth seats, so that we can try to get them legislation for nullification, make sure they even understand nullification, and that we can create a feedback mechanism of as our electeds are in office and producing liberty legislation that we even know about it. Because right now, we don't, we don't even know what our electeds are doing or what the good news of their service is so that we can then report on that and generate more white pills for people to engage with. So that was the first thing I did. And then I set up the defend the guard team. The defend the guard team, you know, has been killing it. They were knocking doors in Maryland. They've, defend the guard has passed committee in three states this week. So, you know, that is killing it. You know, that provides another, I'm going to have to veer off again. That provides another avenue for the fundraising that I'll get into. So then the next thing was to stand up the sound money team to, to support legalization of gold and silver and Bitcoin at the state level as well as a psychedelics team. So that we're covering our bases of left and right to reach out to. And if I may go off course a little bit on fundraising again, the issue coalitions are very, very key. Another key way for us to handle fundraising, because the data that we have, the membership data that we have, people tell us when they become members or renew their membership to like how, like what three issues are passionate, they're passionate about. So if the more of these issue coalitions you have, the more you can chop that data up by their own professed value in those issues. So if we have an active psychedelics thing, all the people who said, oh, drug war, boom, that's my issue. We then can go out and, and call those people and we can sort that data because it's F V C compliant by occupation and employer. So we can start with the lawyers first, and that is something that we can hire fundraisers for, I think. But so the more of those issue coalitions, the more you can do that. We did try to do that with Matt Butts, but he didn't, he, he didn't last long.
Right. So how close are we to making those calls and getting some money back from those efforts?
Uh, well, the next thing, like I said, is standing up the psychedelic teams and the sound money teams. I am doing this part time. You know, so it's, it's hard in 20 a week, 20, you know, when you're doing the job of standing up the electoral strategy and the legislative strategy and the data strategy and all of this, it's, it's pretty hard to do, you know, part time. So I would say within a couple of months, but I have also started the process of developing support materials or, I'm sorry, marketing materials for those targets.
Okay. And I'm asking because, you know, the Kennedy Victory Fund will be ending here in the near future and we will need to do something to replace that income. So I'm sure you're aware that board members are required to report any potential conflicts of interest publicly. If you got the job tonight, for example, what conflicts would you be reporting tomorrow or this week?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any conflicts of interest. I know there was concern about one contract that I had for three months with the American Values PAC. But as a contractor, I can contract with multiple places. I know I've talked to the F V C about it. I know the legal spoke with you guys about it, or at least you, Kathy, that, that that is not a conflict of interest. But, you know, I suspect that that would be brought up and I'm, I'm okay with that. American Values is a nonpartisan organization that's looking at perhaps supporting libertarian candidates in the future. And I would love to maintain a relationship with them as chair to that effort. And I know Larry Sharp was over there working. And in fact, I had a conversation with Larry Sharp recently about coming back and doing some ballot access fundraising for the party.
Well, sure. And I, and you and I've had this conversation. I mean, I was concerned about that not being reported. Potential, the, the issue is the potential conflict.
It was reported. I told, I told you personally. So I did report it.
Yeah, yes, you did, but you did not report it to the board. And we.
I reported it to you. I reported it to the chair. I reported it to multiple members of the board. I sought counsel from the F V C. They said it wasn't a conflict of interest. I know you spoke with legal. They said it wasn't a conflict of interest. So I don't, I don't know what there is to, you know, what the, what the issue is.
Right. Well, it was, it was my understanding until, you know, a, a last week or so that there was an addendum to your contract regarding it. And, you know, you did not sign that apparently, or it was not offered to you.
Yeah, I did not receive any such thing.
Okay.
But, yeah.
It, it, so the, so it is your, I, I understand from your answers to Meredith's questions that it, you don't feel that you would have to report any potential conflicts of interest based on income received from people who may or may not be current donors to the L P, but who are wanting to fund your vision. Is that correct?
Well, I don't, you, you threw the word conflict of interest in there. I don't, I don't know what, where that is coming from. No, what I said was that I would be willing to disclose the names of the people funding me as soon as everybody on the board discloses the names of who signs their checks.
Well.
I would do it, but I would want you to do it too first.
Oh, well, I have, I, yeah, I'm not getting any income. I'm retired.
All right, we're one down.
Okay.
We're one down. I would need the rest.
Can we agree that someone who receives their income from Wendy's, for example, is different from somebody receiving income from donors of the party?
No, I think business run on, runs on private investment.
Sure, but there's a requirement to, to reveal those. I mean.
No, there's no requirement for that.
You don't believe that there's a requirement to, to.
Yeah, no, if I'm, if I'm, you, you, just the same way that you, you don't have to know the people who sign my checks. Sure, it's Wendy's, but who signs the checks? Who sends, you know what I mean? So like, I, I don't think it's different. I think you're trying to make it different. And, and I think you're motivated to make it different. But I think the, the situation in the party is that this is a tactic that is used, that the, the logical conclusion is that we are either only going to have destitute chairs or we're going to have independently wealthy chairs and, and, you know, basically cut off the pool of available talent or a part-time chair. Sorry, that's the third option, part-time chairs. So if we want a full-time chair, I, I think we've got to stop, you know, treating like people making money is this like weird thing or this bad thing. It's a good thing. It's, I mean, we're capitalists. We want to make money. We want people to succeed. We want people to have thriving families and, and be able, you know, be able to work hard doing it. I don't, I don't understand.
Well, I think that's a mischaracterization. I think that there's a big difference. I'm all for.
But then why is this like a probing thing? I don't understand.
Because we are currently dealing with some conflict of issue.
But that is allegedly about a contract that was not disclosed. This would be completely private with nothing to do with the party.
Okay. Well, that is what I am trying to understand if you think.
Yeah, no, I stated that. I would not be taking money from the party. I would not be seeking money from the party. I would not be seeking contracts. This would be completely between me and people who want to make sure that all of the details that I have explained in this conversation that have not been explained anywhere else, no vision like what I've just explained has been explained anywhere else can be done to the fullest of their capacity while also maintaining the networks and connections that Angela has forged and also that I have on my own through the Liberty Movement. So I think I offer something very unique in that we should be happy that there are people who are so passionate to make that full time because I haven't heard it from anywhere else. I haven't seen.
And just for the record, I am not against people making money and capitalism and so forth, but
Thank you.
we do have conflict of interest rules and reporting of potential conflicts. And there's a difference between receiving that money and not, you know, and not being a great idea and reporting that.
Right. But this is why, this is why, so like, for example, one thing I would do as chair is we have a, we have an attorney on retainer. We just ask his opinion. Hey, is, is getting private funding to be chair, you know, a conflict of interest? You know, like this isn't, this isn't something, like this is a C N N tactic that's being used right now. And I think the people who see this video are going to understand that.
Well, we'll see. I'm watching some comments in another chat and I, I don't think it's being taken that way. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yennis Scavitch. Thank you, Mr. Heiss. We will move to Ms. Ford. Then we will circle back around. I think we're back at the beginning here. So well, Mr. Ford will be the last of the original comments, I believe, or first timer.
I'm going to pass for right now.
Okay. All right. I will put your hand down for right now. Please feel free to raise it again. Ms. Harlow?
Okay, this is going to be a multi-part. The, I have to just tell you personally, which will be no surprise to you, that I believe that a staff member endorsing Trump was already a huge problem and defending that as a chair candidate, I believe is unconscionable. I'm wondering if you're aware that the bylaws actually do require the L N C to be partisan. And basically what you were advocating was against the bylaws. So I would like your opinion on, on that. Job of a presiding officer is to respect the rules of the party. The second thing I'd like you to address has been touched on by, I think, multiple people is when the L P is your job and it's not coming from directly from the L P. For instance, if we were blessed enough to be able to pay L N C members, but from outside donors, losing those donors, it, it, it's, it's a temptation that we've seen already, I think, some bad fruit of, that's from public records. And I note that you refused to answer that question before. Do you believe it's the job, and this kind of circles back to the bylaws of the chair, to support the national candidate? Even if you don't like them. And one correction, I actually spoke with Mr. Amash. And I do not believe you properly characterized his beliefs. I'm not saying it was intentional. But he certainly does believe in running local candidates and focusing on local races.
Yeah, I also have had conversations with him and, and what I was told is that, you know, nobody cares about local. And I mean, this, granted, this was a few years ago, but I do think it's a significant difference. But I'm sorry, can, there was like two or three questions. Can you?
Yeah, sure. So it.
Would I follow the rules of supporting the candidate? Yeah. I mean, I wasn't on the board. If I was on the board, of course I would have to follow the rules. And I think, I think the chair and the board did.
Oh, you think the chair properly supported Chase Sullivan under the bylaws? Is that your opinion?
Yes, I think that is.
Oh, okay. Well, that's disqualifying. Thank you.
I, I think suing the L N C is disqualified.
Yeah, I think attacking L N C members that are asking you questions is too. Yeah, I think attacking LNC members that are asking you questions is too, but that's your opinion.
Let's, let's stop here. Uh, okay, we're gonna move on to, we have Ms. Hayes and then Mr. Watkins. Ms. Hayes, I believe you're muted if you're speaking.
Oh, my apologies. Mr. Heiss, I wanted to ask, you've been working, um, you mentioned, um, psilocybin or psychedelics. Um, Defend the Guard, I believe, is one of your projects as well, PDR. Can you speak a little bit, like, um, for example, uh, about how local races went for you guys, or for you, from your perspective, anything that you worked on this last, um, election cycle as well as, uh, Defend the Guard and any sort of psychedelics measures?
Sure, so defend the, the, the elections, I can't really speak. So I know, uh, Michigan had some very good results. And I think another guy was elected in, uh, Maryland, but at that point in time of like last election, uh, at that point, I was standing up the, uh, the support materials for, for the different initiatives and, you know, I, I was hired at like the end of twenty-four, so it was kind of, it was very, very difficult to be able to stand up a program to support the candidates and, uh, knowing what I, what I was saying earlier about the, kind of the iterative process of you create the materials, then you create the initiatives, and then you, uh, do the data research, and then you, you go out and start to create the relationship. I, I focused on that instead, and that's, that's what I was hired to do, uh, and what I explained in, in a document, uh, before I was ever hired.
Can you explain to me? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, so I did that. Uh, Defend the Guard is going very, very well. I mean, as you guys know, last, uh, last uh, cycle that it had, you know, passed multiple state houses, multiple state senators, multiple state committees. Uh, the bone banking efforts of that, of that had just started recently, uh, in the past three committees. I believe Pete Hegseth has restated his interest in it. Um, you know, I know I called, uh, a state senator here that was, uh, interested in it, let her know the good news, so we could try to push it forward here. Uh, and I think I stood up, I called and got together, I think about twenty people for that particular team, uh, and, and also, uh, have them volunteering with, uh, bring our troops home. So a key effort of these issue coalition strategies is to not be working in isolation, but be working with outside groups that are focused on these issues, uh, so that we can really be effective, uh, and form those coalitions. And again, build that trust and for, and like branch out into these new, uh, networks to, to start talking with people and, and build trust.
Just a clarifying question for my, uh, because I'm ignorant on this. When you, when you, you keep using the term, um, standing up, what are you talking about with that? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So, okay, so, um, you, you, when you create the initiatives, first you have to create a skeleton of like, okay, what's the end goal? What are the tactics employed? Uh, you know, what do we want to do? Can we fundraise off it? What would be the fundraising goals of those tactics? Um, you know, who are we going to work with? What's the name of the campaign? Can we get the URL for that campaign? So like, that's the first thing. You have to build the skeleton. Uh, and then once you have all of that, uh, then you can start the process of calling people, uh, and, and explaining that skeleton to them and, and getting them aboard and getting their volunteers. And then once you have the volunteers together, then you have to, you know, start the process of having their first meeting and, you know, and, uh, you know, getting their efforts together. You know, maybe we have to have them rank order the different tasks at hand, uh, so that you can start to delegate those tasks by passion to the people who are involved in doing it. So, you know, that is the process of standing up, you know, and I've been doing.
Got it.
That's, that's what I've been doing. Um, so did that for, uh, doing it for Project Essentialized Revolution was a bear, and that was always going to be, uh, the toughest one because I, I did, you know, these kinds of interviews with, uh, with states, state parties across the country. Um, you know, trying to explain the whole thing and, and, you know, I had to develop that, that presentation. It's an hour long, you know, so, um, that was always, the electoral strategy being the most detailed and nuanced one was always going to be the hardest one. Uh, and then you bang out the, uh, the issue coalitions, and then you, you know, I've also simultaneously worked on some of this data stuff, uh, so that we can have at least some targets, you know, right now. And, uh, then, you know, there's, when you're doing the data research, patterns emerge in the data that you're looking for, uh, that constitute the basis of a marketing campaign to that data, uh, so then that has to be developed. Like, this is all very complex stuff. I don't think it's as simple as like, oh, we're just gonna get a fundraiser. It's, it's, it, you know, nobody has explained this kind of detail. Like, that's, that's the thing that's so shocking to me, is that I've, I've come up with all of this and, you know, we're, the, the people on the board are, have not been doing the fundraising, and I'm, I've been developing all of this, and no one's come to the staff meeting and even knows about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. We will go to Mr. Watkins now.
Yeah, just to touch back on, um, potential conflict of interest with, you know, private donors, um, donating to you. There have been, uh, members, previous members of the LNC and possibly current members of the LNC that both received donations from members of the party or have donated to members of the party. Do you see those, do you see that as different than, um?
No, 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 and, and specifically, I remember when, uh, there was an effort to, uh, stop Karen Anne Harlow from receiving Patreon supporters, and that was a big fight, and she fought to preserve those Patreon, uh, supporters, and I fought with her to support those Patreon influencers because I believe in us making money. I believe in us, uh, you know, having everything that we need to pursue our passions in this party because we need it. We're so resource deprived, we're so manpower deprived that we need it. Uh, and I would fight for Karen Anne again, even, even though, you know, we have parted ways, uh, for that, because it's just, it's just the right thing. We need it.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Mr. Lamb.
Yes, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Watkins has taken my own question. I understand that, uh, both Secretary, Ms. Harlos, as well as our, the outgoing chair, uh, had both taken Patreon donations. So that was my main question regarding the conflict of interest with the donations regarding individuals that had, chose to give to their Patreons. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Heiss, for answering that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Uh, we will move to Ms. Harlos again.
Okay, um, where you say you don't see a, 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 a difference, um, since you invoked my name, I didn't really intend upon speaking again. Um. One, one thing, you don't see a difference between people paying you to enact your vision as chair, uh, and people who are just supporting a channel that has absolutely nothing to do with supporting what I do as secretary. I don't claim it's to support any vision as secretary, and in fact.
I don't call the disanction. I think you should be getting support for whatever you need.
Yeah, I was.
Uh, everyone stop, everyone stop. Let's not inter, uh, let's not interrupt question askers or question takers. So, uh, Ms. Harlos, please finish, and then Mr. Heiss, please give your uninterrupted answer, but let the question play out, please.
Yeah, um, I, I have to say that I, I do see a difference between who's paying somebody's day job or who's paying for somebody's whatever other kind of income they do, and I'm like Kathy, I firmly believe in capitalism. But if you are specifically saying that they're paying you to be chair, that is different than somebody getting paid to serve the best chili on earth or to deliver up content, you know, where they're poking fun at Matt Walsh. It's much different if I was asking to get paid as secretary. If I was asking to get paid as secretary, I would disclose every single person that paid because that is something that is directly related to the LP that could cause undue influence. Um, so I, I would like you to explain why you don't think it's different, and, um, to explain, uh, your understanding, or if you're aware, not, don't say go ask the attorney. I'm asking your particular opinion of the duty to disclose that's in our policy manual, and that is just in general nonprofit duty law. And if you familiar size yourself at all with that, like any articles on the duties of nonprofit boards.
Uh, so as far as the first question, I think it's an arbitrary distinction because it all goes in the same pile. Whether or not your Patreon is about knitting or, or your secretarial work, you are in fact the secretary, uh, and you have the same bills regardless. So, uh, you are getting paid and you are being the secretary. You're getting grassroots support. So, I mean, are you saying that if I, uh, make a Patreon, make it about knitting, and then the same people who would, who would just, you know, form a contract with me or, uh, maybe a consulting contract with me to do this or something like that? Um, you know, instead of doing that, they just gave that same money to the Patreon. I, I, I think you can see where I'm going here, where this is completely arbitrary, uh, and it's, it's very unfortunate to hear you echoing the arguments that were used against trying to take your Patreon. Um, but no, I, I, I just, I, I don't see how I have to answer the question. I, I, I don't, I guess, it's not that I don't have to answer the question. I, I just don't understand how I have to answer for, oh, are you allowed to have a contract? Are you allowed to, you know, like, that's, I, I thought we championed contracts. Like, I, I genuinely don't understand.
Okay, well, good thing that isn't what I said, but I believe my question stands on its own, and I don't wish to beck.
Okay, so here's where we're at right now. I see three hands up. Uh, one person hasn't spoken yet, I believe, but we are at just over, I think we're at forty-five minutes now, so five more than Mr. Nikala got. Uh, we can, can, I have no problem continuing with the next two questions. If Mr. Heiss has no objection to that, or the LNC doesn't, or we can come back to order and we can move to a vote. Um, I have no problem letting Mr. Ford, Mr. Lamb play out, Mr. Nana. So let's just do this then. Actually, we have three hands up, and then that's it. We're gonna call it. Is everyone, is there any objection to that on the LNC from Mr. or, or Mr. Heiss?
Yes, I object. At this point, I think we're just going around in circles over and over again on things that have already been addressed, so I object to continuing.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree, but I, I do want to make sure that there's general consensus here. It is, are we okay with just coming back to order and then moving forward with this vote now? I do agree that I believe we're going around in circles now.
Yes.
Are we, are we, are any strong objections?
Can I make one last comment on the, on the fundraising thing?
Hold on, no, no, no. Mr. You're already, Mr. Heiss, you're already over time. Mr. Nikala only got forty minutes. We're at forty-five now. So.
I'd be leaving a job to do this.
Mr. Heiss. Are we okay coming back to order?
Yes.
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 I'd like to have a chance to ask a question.
I object.
I'm going to, I'm gonna call us, but Mr. Ford, you had your chance then. So, um, your vote can reflect whatever. It seems that, I'm gonna read the room here, and it seems that the majority of people are kind of over this now. We're going around in circles. We're over time already. I'm gonna call us back to order at ten thirteen Eastern Time. We are now back in session. I'm gonna put the hands down, and we are going to, I think enough debate has been had, and we are going to move to, straight to a vote. So whenever the secretary is ready, if she could pull up the ballot, we will go ahead and move forward to a vote. This will be by name.
I have an objection about the timing. I'd like the opportunity to.
When, when, Mr. Ford, you are out of order. The chair is speaking. When we move forward to the. Uh, you will be called upon by the secretary. You will give a name, uh, and then we will go ahead and, uh, and that will be your recorded vote. Okay?
I'd like to make a motion to take a twenty-minute break so that I can poll my chairs.
Objection.
Um, stop, everyone stop, everyone stop. Okay, there is a motion on the floor to recess for twenty minutes. We just got back into session. Is there a second for that motion? The motion dies for lack of second. Mr. Lamb?
Yes, I would just like to motion that tactically, I evidently have not been, uh, appropriately in this meeting as Secretary Harlos has indicated that she let it slide to allow me into this meeting. So I, I think most of this meeting has been out of order.
Your objection, or I don't know what that was. I don't know if it was inquiry or point of order. Um, okay, so I guess your vote, well, your vote won't count. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it certainly.
I don't believe you've been on the prevailing side, Mr. Lamb. So if you're, if you're, if you're saying that your presence here as a voting member is something that is out of order by your own admission, then your vote is irrelevant. Not that you've been on the prevailing side for anything anyway.
The only time it would make a difference is if your vote made a difference. So your, your mere presence of an illegitimate potential vote, um, does not invalidate a whole meeting, but I try.
That is, um, I don't know.
Is the alternate in that case.
Let's, uh, let's come back to order. Everyone stop. Uh, Mr. Watkins.
Seeing that we're out of time, I moved to adjourn.
No, when you're out of time, you move directly to a vote. That's what happened.
There's a, so, so, I'm sorry, um, hold on. So let's, um, okay. Hold on, so there's been a motion to adjourn. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to adjourn, so, uh, who is the second? I'm sorry.
Mr. Boss.
Mr. Boss is, uh, so Mr. Watkins has moved to adjourn. Mr. Boss has seconded. Let's just, um, actually, we're gonna do this by hands. Uh, will the secretary stop sharing, sharing the screen? Because I think we all know how this is gonna go.
I object. I would prefer a roll call.
Very well. We will move to a roll call vote. So this is a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Watkins, seconded by Mr. Boss. When the secretary is ready, we will, uh, let's just keep wasting everyone's time. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. Uh, you'll have to unmute. I'm sorry, you're muted.
Mr. Boss.
Yes.
Mr. Dar.
No.
Mr. Dassin.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Pass.
I will vote no. Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Chatterton, would your vote be the same as Mr. Lamb's? Well. Mr. McGee.
No.
Mr. Nana.
No.
Mr. Nikala.
No.
Mr. Redpath.
No.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Ms. Yena Scavitch.
No.
Mr. Garcia.
I vote yes.
Mr. Chair, it is tied.
Uh, the chair will vote nay. The motion fails. The, we will proceed immediately to the chair's vote. So reiterate, while the secretary gets the ballot ready, again, she will call on your name. You will give your preference for Mr. Heiss. Mr. Nikala, you may abstain or no doubt. Those are your options. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. We are not taking point of order. We're not, this is dilatory at this point. Everyone understands the assignment unless you do not understand the assignment. Uh, we're gonna proceed. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Spanish is my first language, and I understand the, the assignment. So, Madam Secretary, if you would.
Mr. High, uh, excuse me, Mr. Boss.
Uh, Mr. Heiss.
Mr. Dar.
Mr. Nikala.
Mr. Dassin.
Pass.
Mr. Ford.
Pass, I'm trying to poll my numbers.
Mr. Garcia.
Uh, I'm gonna go for Nikala. Thank you.
I'm gonna vote for Steven Nikala. Mr. Lamb.
Heiss.
I would like my vote recorded as Heiss as well as alt.
Okay, I, I will make sure that is in the minutes, Mr. Chatterton. Um, Mr. McGee.
Mr. Nikala.
Mi- Mr. Nana.
Mr. Nikala.
Mr. Nikala.
I'll vote for myself.
Mr. Redpath.
Mr. Nikala.
Mr. Vincent.
Heiss.
Mr. Watkins.
Heiss.
Ms. Yena Scavitch.
Yena Scavitch. I'm sorry, uh, yeah, no, no, uh, Nikala.
I'm sorry, Ms. Yena Scavitch. You're voting for yourself? You're not an option here unless you, I missed something.
I was reading my name.
Uh, Mr. Dassin.
Heiss.
Mr. Ford.
Still working on a pass.
Uh.
Madam Secretary.
You're the last one.
If you could please record me as Mr. Heiss as well. I know it doesn't matter, but I'd like it to be on the record.
Um. Okay, that, I, I will, I will do that, but this is not gonna, the reason it was with Chatterton is because of the question of Mr. Lamb's vote, but I'll do that as a courtesy, but this is not something I'm going to be doing regularly. Mr. Ford.
I'll vote for Michael Heiss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Uh, Chair Pro Tam, uh, the votes are, uh, if I'm counting correctly, yes, six for Heiss, eight for Nikala. Do you wish to vote?
The chair will cast a vote here. Uh, before I do, I would just like to draw Region One Chairs and some other people of interest's attention too. I've recently taken up Lego sets, and you see the Nano Gauntlet and the Thanos Gauntlet. Like, maybe they're saying number one for Region One. I'm not really quite sure, but they are, you know, they're very nice there. So with that, I will cast my vote for Mr. Nikala. Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, Mr. Chair. The vote passes for Mr. Nikala, nine to six, to zero, to zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malagon and Libertarian National Committee. I look forward to working with you and I won't let you down.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala.
And, uh, I do, I would ask, uh, Mr. Malagon, Chair Pro Temp, if he could maintain the gavel on the next vote because I do have a nomination.
Uh, certainly. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I will, I will keep the gavel at your direction. Uh, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Vice Chair's election. Uh, so Mr. Nikala, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malagon. I would like to nominate Mr. Paul Dar for Vice Chairman of the Libertarian National Committee.
Okay, so we are open nominations for the Office of Vice Chair. Mr. Nikala has nominated Mr. Dar. Are there other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair?
I nominate Andrew Watkins.
Mr. Lamb has nominated Watkins. Okay.
Actually, I'll accept. Fine, I'll accept it.
That was, uh, that was interesting. Okay, so we have two nominations. Before I, are there any other nominations? Going once, going twice. Okay, nominations are now closed. Mr. Dar? I hope you didn't lose, Mr. Dar.
No, I just came back on here. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Dar, do you accept your nomination for Vice Chair of the Libertarian National Committee?
Uh, yes, I do.
Excellent. Uh, would you like to speak to your nomination for up to five minutes?
Uh, yes, I would. Um, I'll try to keep it brief, though, in the interest of time. We've been here a long time tonight. Um. I have been a member of the party for a long time and we're currently in a time of the greatest division I've seen. We've, we've had division many times throughout the party. And I would like to reach out and work with Mr. Nikala to help bring the party back together here. Um, I have experience as an executive here in Texas, as an executive in California for some time. I've been a county chair. When I was in California, I've been on, um, county, um, committee out here in Texas. Um, I've held various levels of participation within the party. I believe I'm positioned to help Mr. Nikala, to help us mend our fences across the party right now. And would really like to do so with the party. I would like to help, uh, achieve his goals and, um, and, and returning the, the party to being able to fundraise like we need to, to be able to run candidates across all the states to further, um, our candidate outreach as we want to, to be able to have membership once again raised by ending the divisions within the party. We can help bring the party together and to, uh, reach the goals that he has set. I'll save the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dar. Uh, Mr. Watkins, do you accept your nomination?
Yeah, I'll accept if, uh, you know, if there's people that would like to see my name put forward, that's fine. Um, I have worked with staff a lot in the past. I'm probably the only LNC member that regularly attends staff meetings. Um, but I, I don't have any, if those vote against me, I, that doesn't, I don't take that personally. Um, that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. So we can do a couple of things here. I'm gonna read the room. Um, so I can make the same motion that I made before where we uh, we had, we recess at the, uh, at the call of the chair and we have another Q and A here. Or if people want to go straight to a vote, we can do that. Uh, if, if there's anyone that wants the former, we will go ahead and do that. If there's anyone that prefers the latter, we can do that. So we can just go straight to that. So I'm gonna just do kind of an informal poll here and read the room. Does any, raise your hand if you would like to go into a similar session that we went into for Chair and, I'm sorry, for Chair, but for Vice Chair.
Um, with qualifications, with qualifications, uh, so I'll raise my hand, but I'd like to explicate.
Okay, so Mr. Lamb has just shown favor for that. So Ms. Harlos, if you'd like to speak.
Um, I would like to, but time limited. Um, uh, in, in short, it's getting late for people, but I. Yeah, I think ten minutes each. Um, I personally don't, I might have some questions after hearing others, but like if everyone just promises to keep it succinct, I do think we need to, to, to hear from both candidates and it's fair to them to explain their vision.
Okay, so, but before I make my motion with the understanding that it will be limited to ten minutes per candidate and then we will come out of the recess and go to a vote, I will move to, uh, move to recess at the call of the chair.
Uh, Mr. Malagon, I do object to it being time limited.
So it's Malagon. Um, okay, so we can do a roll call vote for this. I mean, you, you can object to it. Um, I, I'm not sure that you're quite reading the room here, Mr. Lamb, and that's fine. Uh, you wouldn't be the first, you wouldn't be the first Libertarian to not be able to read a room. That's absolutely fine.
I'll, I'm, I'm just gonna.
I would, uh, so.
Sorry, I'm just gonna withdraw my name because I, I do not want to drag this out.
Okay, so Mr. Watkins has withdrawn that and just to consent, just to confirm, Mr. Watkins, you are, you are removing your name from consideration?
Correct.
Okay, so let's go to, so right now we have one nominee then, uh, it would be Mr. Dar. So if someone would like to move to appoint Mr. Dar, we can go straight to debate and then a ballot.
I so move.
So I, okay, so Mr. Redpath has moved to appoint Mr. Paul Dar as Vice Chair of the Libertarian National Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lamb and just to be clear, the nominator was the Chair, Mr. Nikala. So we'll go ahead and move into debate. Uh, does anyone wish to say anything before we go to a vote? Hearing none, we will go straight to, oh, Mr. Watkins.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I think this whole thing was rushed and, um, unnecessarily so. And I will be voting no da or objecting or, or whatever.
Okay, do noted. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Nikala?
Yes, I just want to say, uh, I look forward to working with Mr. Dar. We're gonna be attached by the hip, uh, as we proceed and we're gonna accomplish many great things. So I would encourage this body to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nik. Any further? Comment? We will go, we'll go ahead and move to. Vote then. Sorry, my connection, um, I'll be turned off my video after this, but, uh, Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. So again, the motion on the table is the election or the appointment of the Libertarian National Committee Vice Chair. Um, Madam Secretary, take it away.
Uh, Mr. Boss?
None of the above.
Mr. Dar?
I am ceding to my alternate for this vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Dar.
Whoops, didn't move down a line. Mr. Dasing?
No da.
Mr. Ford?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Garcia?
I'll vote for Dar.
I will vote for Paul Dar. Mr. Lamb?
No da.
Just for the records, Mr. Chatterton, would your vote be the same?
Yes, please.
Mr. McGee?
Mr. Dar.
Mr. Nana?
Mr. Dar.
Mr. Nikala?
Mr. Dar.
Mr. Redpath?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dar, Mr. Dar.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Vincent?
No da.
Mr. Watkins?
No da.
Ms. Janice Scavitch?
Mr. Dar.
Yeah, I didn't put a formula there, so we, we do have eight for Mr. Dar. Um, oh, I put this in the wrong column. I'm so sorry. One second. We had one abstention. And let me count these because I didn't put a formula in. One, two, three, four, five, four, uh, no da. And eight is a majority of a board of.
I haven't voted yet, Madam Secretary.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Uh, Chair Pro Temp, Malagon?
I will also cast my vote for Mr. Dar. Uh, congratulations with the vote total of nine to zero to zero. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess.
It's, it's nine for Dar, um, five for no da, one express abstention.
Okay, nine, five, nine, zero to five to one. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Dar. You are the new Libertarian National Committee Vice Chair. And with that, I happily pass my gavel to the new Chair of Libertarian National Committee. You'll notice it says take human action because I really do believe in single-issue coalitions. And, uh, Chair Nikala, the, uh, the gavel is, is passed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malagon. I appreciate all your hard work as Chair Pro Temp and thank you Libertarian National Committee for instilling me with this honor and I will be serving this party with every ounce of my being. I very much look forward to it. Next up on the agenda is appointment of McCardle Post-Resignation Investigatory Committee and the discharge of McCardle Pre-Resignation Investigatory Committal Committee. The removers are Mr. Hayes and Mr. Dar, so that's already a mover and a second. So we'll go ahead and move on to discussion on this item. Uh, Ms. Hayes or Mr. Dar, do you, would you like to speak on behalf of your motion?
Um, I am Ms. Thank you very much. You called a mister at first. That's my father.
I think I was trying to say Miss, Mr. Dar.
Uh, I understand that there has been, um, a, a bunch, a lot of concern, um, from the membership about an independent outside firm investigation. I don't think there's any reason that, um, that could not be, uh, engaged at a later date if necessary. At the time, the funds being what they are, we do not have those funds available. I think we do need to get a start on this matter within the, um, within people who know the party structure and have a certain level of familiarity with what's going on. I do believe it's good to have someone from outside the LNC be a part of this, um, especially since there will be a certain uh, a level of investigating what happened with other members of the LNC and what we all knew. So I do think it's important to have someone from outside. But, um, in the interest of getting this worked out quickly and getting the ball rolling, I do believe we need to have, uh, uh, LNC committee members also as part of this. So that is, um, Mr. Dar, if he has anything else, he can go ahead.
Mr. Dar?
I, I just wanted to echo the, um, wish of the, the body that many members have reached out to me wishing that there was, uh, members that weren't on the LNC on this committee. And I am thankful to be able to have at least one member on there. I know we're trying to move urgently, but, um, having that will restore faith with the membership a little bit more, I think. Thank you.
I just want everyone to note that the language I have up there is, uh, the only reason it's up there is because that is what was included in the notice. Um, nobody's actually moved that, so it, it can be a little different. I just want to let you know that's why the language that was up there, I just copied it from the notice.
So my understanding is this is, let's see, appointed special committee to investigate issues of conflict of interest and business practices of the Libertarian National Committee consisting of six members of the LNC and one non-LNC member. So that is the motion, correct?
That was the motion that was noticed, um, but it's open to amendment and I'm waiting to see if anyone else has amendments. Uh, I do, if not.
Okay, does anybody have any discussion on this? Uh, we'll go ahead with Mr. Boss.
Uh, yes, I would, um, see. Forward this. I move to amend the composition of the committee to be uh, four LNC members and three non-LNC members.
All right.
The rest will stay the same.
There is a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dasing. All right, so we have an amendment to the motion. We'll go ahead and move into discussion on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion?
Um, I can't raise my hand, uh, when I, um, am sharing. It, it was four and what, Mr. Dos, of Mr. Boss?
Uh, three to keep the original total of seven.
Okay.
Unless my math is off. It is late.
Don't ever count on me for math.
Mr. Boss, did you want to speak to your amendment?
Uh, briefly, uh, I was initially in support of the original wording, um, uh, although we cannot afford to hire an outside auditor. Uh, I do believe it is, it may have been demonstrated that, uh, the current LNC may not be impartial enough to fully investigate itself. So I would like to see some more outside eyes.
All right.
I can't raise my hand, Mr.
Harlos, see if you recognized?
Yes, and I'm so sorry. I'm sure it's on here somewhere, but Zoom changed. Uh, my, here, here's my concern. I, I'm, I'm in favor of the idea of having outsiders. I've said that honestly all along. Um, my problem is the details, uh, that, who? Like, we're, we're, we're appointing this committee with no names. And to me, that, that, that's going to delay things. Do we know three non-LNC members that are? And to me, you know, I think there needs to be some qualifications on these non-LNC members, that they need to be party elders. Maybe former state chairs, former national chairs, whatever. This is very serious business. And also, this might make a difference as to whether or not people will vote for this amendment is, I'm going, I intend upon offering an amendment after these are all disposed of. I, I think the original motion doesn't follow the spirit of the one it's intended to replace. This isn't an investigation into some amorphous issues of the Libertarian National Committee. This is an investigation specifically about specific allegations of misconduct of the Chair. Now, this committee may come out with recommendations that other things need to be investigated. They might find bigger problems, but this is way too much of a, a broad of scope. And, and that committee, if it finds other problems, should recommend another committee or further investigation. But what spawned this is a very specific incident and this is so broad. So that might influence people on who they want on the committee. It's the only reason I'm bringing it up now and why I think it's germane. So those are my concerns. Have at them.
Thank you, Ms. Harlos. Uh, Mr. Redpath, you recognized?
Yes, I would like to, if this is possible, to make a, uh, an amendment to the amendment. I think we can go one deeper here. I think the committee, I move that the committee be imposed, be composed of the three members of the Audit Committee and Bill Redpath as Treasurer and Meredith Hayes. Uh, I think that this should not be a matter of, of, um, the number of LNC member, members versus non-LNC members. It should be composed of people who would have some sort of expertise to competen- competently address these issues. And, uh, that would be my, uh, my substitute, uh, amendment.
Mister, I have a point of order. I know Ms. Hayes is not allowed to do it, but thank you, Mr. Chatterton. Uh, so uh, Ms. Hayes needs to be kept off this committee. She was gonna say she was, uh, already threatened legally if she were on a committee of this kind, so she needs to be removed.
Okay, all right. I, I will, without objection then, I will remove her name, uh, and, uh, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll move that the committee be the four people that I mentioned without, uh, Ms. Hayes.
Okay, there was, there was no second, so.
I'll second.
Ex-Ms. Hayes and then Mr. Boss seconded the substitute.
Objection.
Motion, uh, there's objections, so that means we'll go into discussion. And then we're already, we're already three layers deep, so there's no more, uh, we have to dispense with this item. So, uh, there is a second. There was an objection. We'll go into discussion. Uh, Ms. Janice Scavitch and then Mr. Redpath.
Yes, I would like to point out that Mr. Um, Neville who, who was just elected to the Audit Committee is actually an outsider here. Um, he has, knows nothing about the internal operations of our party. Rich Bowen, um, who also was elected to the Audit Committee, um, does know our inside operations, um, as well as there will be necessarily, um, some kind of, um, internal party minutia to review that involves Civi and Zoho and Kixi, um, and so forth. Um, I am not against, um, focusing I am not against focusing the the motion a little bit more pursuant to the Secretary's recommendation. But I do want to allow it to be broad enough that if there, if we identify something or the Audit Committee identifies something, if you all don't want me to be on it, whatever, that there still is broad enough purview to address it and not be hamstrung on that. And I would like, you know, to understand that this is going to be not only identifying, you know, what happened and, you know, figuring out what happened, but also to make recommendations to take corrective action and write new policy and address whatever we do find. I'd like everybody to just keep that in mind as they're considering this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Yanis Cabbage. I think, Bill, were you up next? Your hands down.
I would just like to say I would have no objection to Kathy Yanis Cabbage being on this committee. Just, I'd like, would like the board to know that. I don't know if she'd want to do that, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Redpath. Mr. Malagon and then Mr. Lamb. Mr. Malagon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would say the people that I'd like to see on here, I think, I think the Chair and the Vice Chair are going to be essential here, especially as the transition happens. So I would like to see Mr. Nikala. I'd like to see Mr. Dar on this committee. I would also like to see, you know, some people that have accounting background and that know our internal operations and have been apprised of some of these situations and navigate it more smoothly. So that includes, of course, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Yanis Cabbage, you know, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Redpath, of course, is the Treasurer. And I would also throw in Ben Weir. That would be my, if we kept the original motion, that's what I would like to see. I have no problem with Mr. Redpath's amendment. I just think that those are the names of the people that will put in the work, that understand what we are doing right now and would be essential to this committee getting to the bottom of absolutely everything and anything that we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malagon. Mr. Lamb, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala, Chairman Nikala. I just think it is very important that, given the seriousness of these allegations, that there must be at least several party members that are outside of the LNC involved in this investigation. And at some point, we will likely require services of other outside forensic accountants. But a preliminary investigation can be started now. No one who has been a member of the LNC or staff while Ms. McArdle was Chair should be selected for Chair or Vice Chair of this committee should be involved at this time. If they are cleared during the investigation, they should be considered eligible, but not before. This is not presupposing either guilt or innocence, but is simply a fiduciary duty to the organization. It is a lack of such basic precautionary measures that has brought us to this unfortunate place. And we need to move forward in a professional, respectful, and ethical fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Mr. Boss, I'm going to put you up next. I don't think you've spoken. And then we'll go to Kathy. She's spoken twice. Then Mr. Malagon. So Mr. Boss?
Yes, to Mr. Redpath's suggested composition. I think that solves a lot of the issues with having too many LNC members involved and not enough outside eyes. And I think the fresh, one set of eyes is going to be very fresh. And I think that that is a benefit. The committee can always ask for help. So, thank you.
Ms. Yanis Cabbage, you're up.
I think, I think seven is a good number in terms of an audit. I did audits and investigations of federal grant money for 25 years. And this is a good size for what is coming. My concern with, and I'm not against an outside forensic audit. One, we don't have the money. Two, my concern is where the overlap is between something like that and the audit that we, our annual audit. We, you know, will be having an annual audit. We will already have some, you know, dings on that based on, you know, information that is going to, you know, be revealed here in terms of conflicts and, you know, other party-related expenses. I, we have to, our rules require us to have an annual audit. Where that would overlap is something that I would want to know more about. But an internal audit is part that is absolutely going to be necessary. We need, you know, people who are going to be able to look, you know, tech people at some of our systems. And, you know, Mr. Dar, I believe is, you know, capable of doing that. Mr. Garcia as well, you know, Rich Bowen. I think that those people are very qualified. You know, certainly, anybody who is implicated, I mean, I think, you know, certainly that would be an issue along the way. But the people that know the most about these issues, no one, you know, I am willing to be a participant on the Investigatory Committee or a witness. There are, nobody else on the LNC knows as much about the Kennedy Victory Fund issues. I can shed a lot of light on that, and that is up to you all how you would like to deal with that.
Thank you, Ms. Yanis Cabbage. And then Karen Anne, I saw your hand up. And then, so you already spoke second. We'll let you go. And then we'll go back to Mr. Malagon, then Mr. Boss, Ms. Harlow.
Okay. Four, I think is too small. This is a big, I think it's a bigger undertaking than people, than people think. Just from what's out in public. And, yeah, I, I just tend to think four is too small. I don't have a problem with the four that are there, but I think it needs to be more.
Mr. Malagon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out just something that Mr. Lamb brought up as far as LNC members that were here during your predecessor's tenure. That's not relevant. The whole reason that we're here is because the LNC was kept in the dark. And so that's really the issue here. So I think the people I recommended were, I mean, Ms. Yanis Cabbage has already touched on this at length, but I think that they would be very integral to this process. And of course, none of the people that I mentioned were implicated in any capacity. So I think it's really important to have qualified people that understand our inner workings and how things work. Well, ideally, an outside firm would be great. They don't know how any of that works. The LNC would not have control over this investigation. We just simply can't afford it anyway. So just want to remind people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malagon. Mr. Boss, and then we'll start to wrap this up.
Yes, I would like to iterate. As the four-member team were to pass, I do believe that Mr. Redpath is more than capable of getting a good, leading that group and getting them what they need to produce a good product. Failing that, I would encourage support of the four-three makeup that I proposed. And and I do, I do, I believe it is in the spirit of this motion, although not a giant net. It is the intent to uncover more than just one person's activities. However, that, whatever path that takes, it is not beyond the scope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boss. Mr. Lamb, you had your hand up for a second. Did you intend to speak?
Yes, if you can hear me, I would just like to say thank you very much, Mr. Malagon, for chairing this meeting. I'm very excited to work with Mr. Nikala in our future endeavors. Like, I am the current Chair of the Candidate Support Committee, and I'm very excited to get more candidates elected at local level. So I'm happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lamb. We'll talk. We'll talk. And I look very much forward to working with you and your committee. We're going to, we're going to do some great things. All right, so this is a situation. We've got.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Harlow.
I don't know if there's appetite for this, but I did get a message. I think former LNC members are good candidates, and Dustin Blankenship offered his services.
Okay. All right, so you've got a main motion, you've got an amendment to the main motion, and then you have a substitute motion. So I just want everybody to be clear in how this is going to go down. A substitute motion would act as, it would, clarify if I'm wrong, Ms. Harlow, but if we vote on a substitute motion when we're three layers deep, does that become, do we still have to vote on it twice because it becomes the amendment? So it would, because you have an amendment and then you substitute the amendment, so you would still have to vote on that amendment. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it gets somewhat complicated because the substitute wasn't a substitute to the main motion. It's a substitute to amendment. And just technically, just because, you know, I'm a stickler, we're two layers in deep. Brown zero is the motion, and then we're on a secondary amendment. So if a yes on the substitute would make the substitute the primary amendment, then it could be amended further, I believe. We're not going to get caught up in the weeds here. I believe it could be amended further. I could be wrong on that, but I don't think anyone's going to object.
Just really quickly, Mr. Nikala, I would like to remind you that Mr. Jacobs is still on the call and has offered his services as Parliamentarian, just as a quick reminder.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malagon. Mr. Jacobs, since you're here, if I need you, I'll definitely call on you. So we're a two-story building. We're on the roof. So we're going to go ahead and dispense in the order from top to bottom. So we'll go ahead. We're going to go on to a vote on the Redpath motion to what should be a substitute motion that is the committee to be comprised of the three members of the Audit Committee and Mr. Redpath. So let's just go through a quick, we'll do, let's do a voice, let's do a voice vote. Ms. Harlow, whenever you're ready.
Oh, you mean a roll call?
Roll call vote, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. We'll get on the same terminology.
One second, because like, these people trying to get in late are hiding all of my, all of my controls. I know we don't have titles on these, but I'm trying to just make us go faster, so I'm just going to title this amendment.
I don't like voice votes too much on meetings.
Neither do I. That's why I was kind of surprised. So a yes vote would make Mr. Redpath substitute the primary amendment. It would still, it could be amended further, and it could still be voted on. It still needs to be voted on. Okay. All right. Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Mr. Dar?
Can I pass for now?
Mr. Dasing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
I'll pass.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Ware, I don't have your name there. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I need to pass as well.
I will vote yes. Ms. Hayes, have you still passed your vote to Mr. Malagon? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Malagon?
I will pass for now.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Chatterton, would your vote have been the same?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
I'm going to pass as well.
Mr. Nana?
Pass.
Mr. Nikala?
The Chair will not vote unless it's a tie.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I should have called upon you last. I'm not used to your elevated station, Mr. Redpath.
A lot of things we're going to have to get used to.
Yes.
We, and I, Mr. Rutherford, unfortunately, is no longer here. Ms. Mr. Benson? Mr. Benson? I'll come back to him. I don't know if he's still here. Someone could look. Mr. Watkins?
Abstained.
Okay. Ms. Yanis Cabbage? Ms. Yanis Cabbage?
Oh, um, we are voting on Mr. Redpath's motion?
We're voting on the substitute. It doesn't pass. It just becomes the primary amendment.
Okay, could you clarify that for me, please?
Sure. I'm going to go back to live notes here. If this here passes the motion to substitute, then Mr. Boss's amendment goes away and Mr. Redpath moves up to first place, where it can be amended further, or it can be voted on again, in which case it then becomes the primary motion, which still needs to be voted on. There's a lot of voting still to do.
Okay, then I'll vote yes.
Okay, let me go back here. Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Abstained.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, on the substitution.
Mr. Malagon?
I'll vote yes, because I will intend to amend it for the people that I mentioned earlier and see how that goes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Is Mr. Benson here? I don't think he's here. So Mr. Nikala, the vote is 11, yes, zero, no, two abstentions.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I may, Region Three, can we also vote yes, please? Or, I'm sorry, Region Three South?
No, because you don't auto ascend according to our regional agreement, to my knowledge.
That is, that is correct. However, the seat is currently vacant as he is the Vice Chair.
That is true.
I would have to, it's our regional agreement, but I think it's vacant, vacant. I don't know how that, I actually don't know, because I'm not familiar with South's agreement compared to North's. In North, it would be vacant, vacant. I'm pretty sure.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I believe national bylaws come into play here that in the absence of the regional, whether it's vacant, they're gone, they're out to lunch, whatever, that the alternate gets to vote.
Yeah, I believe that is the case. And
Is that your ruling?
I'll rule that in order. Yep. Mr. Thompson came here as R3 alternate. His main is no longer representing the region. So he is currently, for the purposes of this meeting, he is the acting representative. All right, so.
So it's 12, 02.
All right, the substitute motion, well, substitute amendment passes. So where we're at now is this, now the Redpath language is currently being considered. It's basically an amendment, so we could either vote on this, and then we'd have to vote on it again. And this is an opportunity to change anything and make any amendments, and then vote on that. And then it would become the main motion. If this gets voted down, we go back to the main motion. Mr. Malagon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would just, I would move to appoint a special committee to investigate issues of, so I'm making an amendment. So I've moved to appoint a special committee to investigate issues of conflict of interest and business practices of the Libertarian National Committee consisting of Mr. Paul Dar, Mr. Stephen Nikala, Mr. Ben Weir, Mr. Roman Garcia, Ms. Kathy Yanis Cabbage.
Oh, my God. You guys slow down to a point, because you're leaving the committee language.
I just wanted to get that out, but I can repeat it again.
Can comprise, who are them again?
That would be Mr. Paul Dar, so the Vice Chair, the Chair, Mr. Nikala, Mr. Weir, Mr. Roman Garcia, Ms. Yanis Cabbage, Mr. Redpath, and Mr. Bowen.
Motion to amend?
We're too deep.
Hold on. I'll second that. I'll second.
It's been seconded. So we're going to go ahead and consider this amendment to the amendment. Actually, to substitute, so we'd substitute the amendment. And we can't go any, any more than this. We have to dispense with this. We can't make any amendments till this is taken care of. Mr. Boss? Uh, Mr. Boss, you were.
Well, actually, Mr. Chair, if I could speak to my.
Yes, oh, um, yes, Mr. Malagon, please, uh, do speak to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I, I, I mean, again, I don't wanna. Go too far into it, but I think these are the most qualified people, given their background, given their knowledge about our processes, our. Uh, software, how we do things, uh, obviously, all of the, I mean, all the officers that are in, like. Now, I'm not saying that Ms. Harlos isn't important, but privy to this sort of stuff, that would have to make these decisions and be able to audit all this stuff with staff. Are here and I, 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 and then we have an outside member, non-L N C, who is also on the Audit Committee and would be working. And with them anyway, so I think that, that's why I'm making this amendment, I think that these are the people that are the most qualified for this task. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malagon, uh, Mr. Boss.
Uh, yes, I, I would like to note that, uh, this is essentially the original motion with names just filled in. And I, I, and I would be inclined to vote no, I would like to see the. The outcome of my. Uh, amendment and and have discussion on that, thank you.
Mr. Boss, uh, Mr. Lamb, then Miss Yanis Scavitch?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have been informed during this meeting that Mr. Garcia, Roman Garcia, has been removed as one of our reason reps. So I think it would be appropriate to motion to appoint someone else in this regard. Uh, that is the only reason I motion to amend.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lamb. Uh, Miss Yanis Scavitch?
Um, I. I would like to see, uh, Roman on this committee regardless of his status on the L N C, I would also like to see. Uh, Mr. Doug. Uh, Neville on this committee as well. Um, because he is an outside voice at this point and he was, um. Recently, you know, tonight elected to the Audit Committee. And will help us craft any, um. Uh, policies and corrective action, um, as the investigation deems necessary.
Thank you, Miss Yanis Scavitch, uh, Mr. Malagon, and then Mr. Red Path next.
And I don't know if you saw my hand.
Oh, um, I'm sorry, so.
Yeah, they could go ahead.
Okay, well, uh, we'll put you in, uh, third then, um, Mr. Malagon.
I, I have no problem with Ms. Yanis Scavitch's assessment of that, Mr. Neville, I think would be a fine addition, and then if, if Mr. Garcia's status, I think that's still questionable. Um, Region One's been kind of playing games all night, which is expected, I guess. But then we have more non-L N C members, so that should satisfy the membership even more, we'll have non, more non-L N C members, so I guess the more the merrier here, but we do have to. Be careful about getting too many cooks in the kitchen, so that, I mean, this committee will have to meet probably on a weekly basis and and sort through a lot. There's gonna be a lot of stuff to sort through and it's gonna take some time, I would expect, you know, two to three months. Maybe, I, I don't really know, I don't know what's gonna be found, but I have no problem with adding Mr. Neville, she doesn't wanna make that amendment. And, uh, you know, Mr. Garcia should stay on either way if he's willing to to serve and and do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Malagon, uh, Mr. Red Path and Ms. Harlos? Ye- yes, I don't know Mr. Neville personally, but I've been impressed with what I've read and and what he said this evening and. I agree, I think he would be a, uh, excellent addition to the committee. Sir, Ms. Harlos?
Okay, um. I'm just gonna respectfully disagree with Mr. Lamb, though it, it is an inevitability at midnight is when. Uh, midnight, whatever the latest time zone is in Region One, is when. That unfortunate action will be effective. Um, but then it just makes Mr. Garcia a non-L N C member, a former L N C member, which I think actually. Makes his qualifications even better. Uh, and I agree with the addition of Mr. Neville, I know he's not on here yet. I don't personally know him, um, like personally, personally. Met on Twitter, Very Eager Volunteer and really fresh, not involved in any of the like caucus stuff. Um, you know, it's, 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 it's the clean outside voice, um, I've had a few conversations with him. Um. And he actually like followed up, when's the vote for Audit Committee, he was, you know, very excited, um, very proactive, so if Mr. Malagon's. Substitute. Is passed, I think adding him would be another good outside voice. I just think this needs to get going and remember that once we get to a main motion. I am going to be moving to amend the language to. Say what actually caused the situation, but to address Ms. Yanis Scavitch's concern. To tack on to the end that the committee, um, may make recommendations for further avenues of investigation. And improvements upon business practices.
Alright, um, Mr. Boss, have you already spoken?
I believe one time on decomposition.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you in after Mr. Watkins, because he hasn't spoken and, uh. And then we'll go on to Mr. Chatterton, so, Mr. Watkins, go ahead.
Uh, yes, was Mr. Neville, um, the gentleman that, uh, earlier said something to the effect of, given the embezzlement that has occurred. Um, when he introduced himself, if not, um, then, uh, that's fine, I just wanna. Make sure that, because that just sounds like a conflict to me, if somebody has already concluded an, a certain outcome. But if, if that was not him, then, then I will withdraw that question.
I'm not certain who said what, so. Unless somebody else wants to raise their hand and answer that question, um, uh, I'll, I'll let that be, uh, so we'll go. Mr. Boss. If you still wish to speak, sir.
Uh, I, I had put my hand down because, uh, Mr. Watkins, uh, said the same thing I was about to say, uh, he. Uh, I, it, it has slipped my mind during the previous Red Path motion, but, uh, he did. Open the first line of his email to us, uh, by saying that the Chairhead was involved in embezzlement, I, I do think that is a little bit. Uh, premature.
Uh, Mr. Chatterton and then Miss Yanis Scavitch and then Mr. Lamb, Mr. Chatterton.
Um, I was able to, to pull that up and, uh, the specific statement is, given what's happened in the last few days with embezzlement. Et cetera, I would love to be of service to help straighten things out. So I believe that should be a disqualifying statement for someone who seems to have already concluded. Um, an outcome of this investigation prior to, um, the investigation even being started.
Uh, Miss Yanis Scavitch?
Uh, well, I believe that, uh, Mr. Neville is still on this call, he can, um, if. The board is, um, you know, okay with it, he can, um, speak for himself, I did speak with him at length. Today, um, in, in quite general terms, and I am quite sure that. He will, um, you know. Say that these were allegations of embezzlement and, um, there. You know, certainly that there is no predetermined, um, outcome. But you all, I mean, I would like to ask the, the boards in, you know, um, indulgence to, you know. At, hear from him.
If, if the, are you requesting to speak directly with the applicant?
Sure, well, I think, you know, he can address what he meant by, uh, the statement.
Uh, if there's no objection, if.
Just briefly.
Sure, if there's no objection, Mr. Neville, if you'd like to speak on behalf of your qualifications to be on this committee? And anything else you'd like to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh. Absolutely, um. Like Ms. Yanis Scavitch said, I, that, that email was poorly worded, I don't enter into this with any. Preconceived notion, I should have used the word allegations of embezzlement, that's. So I'm, I'm certainly not coming in this with, um, making any. Determination of, of guilt or innocence on this, so my apologies for the poorly worded email.
That's fine, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Mr. Neville, I appreciate that, uh.
Also, if I could just say one other thing real quick, um, you know, um, Mr. Neville did contact us after seeing. These allegations on X and contacted, uh, the Secretary to, um. You know, offer his services, and so these were allegations that have been bandied around. On the, on X and other places, and so it is appropriate for the committee to, um, you know. Um, do an, do, do an investigation and see wherever that. Leads.
Uh, Mr. Chatterton? And then if there's nobody else, we can start taking votes, Mr. Chatterton?
My hand was still up from previous comment.
Oh, okay, alright, is there anybody else? Okay, I think we know the drill, so. There's currently a motion on the floor, Mr. Malagon moved to substitute to appoint. Amend that the committee be comprised of Mr. Paul Dar, Mr. Nikala, Mr. Ware, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Yanis Scavitch. Mr. Red Path and Mr. Bowen, if this passes, it would become the amendment to the main motion, which. Can be further amended or it can be passed in order to replace the main motion, we'd vote on that, so as long as everybody knows where we're at. Uh, we'll go ahead and go down a line on a roll call vote, Ms. Harlos.
This is a psy-op, you guys are totally illegitimate, totally illegitimate, it's a coup, you guys are not the L N C. Get out of here, get out of here!
Oh, suck.
Unhinged, uh.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, it's apologies, Mr. Chair, I stepped away for like one second.
I got it, I got him.
Thank you so much, apologies.
Alright, where were we?
Uh, so we were on, um, Mr. Malagon's amendment.
Something about being corrupt, if we wanna keep going with that.
I'm sorry, you are muted?
Uh, sorry, I lost, I turned my video off, the connection is, people again, um.
Yeah, don't let anyone in, please, because.
Yeah, no, we're gonna leave it, uh, so apologies, Mr. Chair, we will leave everything, uh, as is for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Boss?
No.
Some reason everyone's wild does that, uh, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, pass.
Mr. Dar?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Dassing?
Uh, no.
Mr. Ford?
Pass.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Malagon?
I will also vote yes with the hopes that someone will amend to add Mr. Neville next round.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Chatterton, would that also be your vote?
Correct.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Red Path?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent, are you, have you returned? Mr. Watkins?
Uh, abstain.
Thank you, um, Ms. Yanis Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson, I believe you passed?
Yes.
Yes, you passed, or this is like, who's on second?
Yeah, yes to both.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ford?
Abstain.
Hey, Mr. Chair, it's, uh, nine, yes, three, no. I think that's two, excuse me, I, my, my battery's going bad on my mouse, uh, two express abstentions.
Alright, motion, uh, uh, passes, so this will become the amendment to the main motion. So, on the amendment, if anybody'd like to discuss that, I'll do so now, Ms. Yanis Scavitch.
I'm sorry, where were we at with this, with the motions?
So, so we were three levels, we're on the roof of the second-story building. Now we're inside on the second floor, we're trying to get to the first floor, so we need to, we're. Mr. Malagon moved to, uh. Substitute the amendment, so now we have a new amendment, which would read. Appoint, uh, amend that the committee be comprised of Mr. Paul Dar, Mr. Nikala, Mr. Weir, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Yanis Scavitch. Mr. Red Path and Mr. Bowen.
Well, okay, would it be in order to amend that motion at this time?
Yes, it would.
I would move to add Mr. Neville to the committee.
Is there a second? Alright, we have a second, is there? Is there any discussion on this?
Call the question.
Alright, we'll go right into a vote. When, at your leisure, Ms. Harlos?
Oh, boy, um, it, there is objection, you said?
Yeah, was there any objection to calling the question?
No.
I know. Is there an objection to Ms. Yanis Scavitch's amendment?
Well, I guess I could ask that first, is there any objection to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so there is objection. Um, there was.
My understatement, Mr. Chair, point of order, uh, Mr. Chatterton, Mr. Chatterton isn't seated.
Oh, that is correct. So Mr. Chatterton's objection doesn't count, is there any seated board member that is, that is objecting to the Yanis Scavitch? Amendment, the addition of Mr. Neville?
I do not want there to be any question regarding this whole thing with Mr. Lamb and Mr. Chatterton, so I will do the objection so that we have a vote on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Harlos.
Okay, excellent, thank you, let's go ahead. A vote?
One, one moment. Oh, I need to just clear this up, because we have way more votes than I anticipated, okay, Mr. Boss?
Pass.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dassing?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Abstain.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Because I did the objection, don't wanna seem like I'm voting, I'm abstaining, um, Mr. Malagon?
Aye.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Chatterton, I understand that would be your vote as well?
Correct, thank you.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Red Path?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent, I'm just gonna keep calling you to make sure you didn't come back, okay, uh, Mr. Watkins?
Uh, abstain.
Ms. Yanis Scavitch?
Yes.
No, it's a pass, I believe, up here, let me go, go back here, Mr. Boss?
Abstain.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair, excuse me, that is eight, two, four.
Looks like the motion passes. So, we are now. We amended the amendment.
So we have now.
The amendment. We're not on the first floor yet, we're still on the second floor, so we, if we vote yes on this, it becomes the main motion. And then whatever you wanna do with the main motion, you could amend it, you could pass it, you could vote no. With the amendment, with the current motion, which is what just passed, uh, it could be amended again, that'll bring us back up to the second layer. Um, so that's where we're at, if anybody has any questions on where we're at? Alright, anybody have any discussion on where we're at, or any discussion on the motion? Doesn't sound like it, so let's go ahead and hop into a vote on, uh, the current item. Um, we'll go take it to a roll call vote.
We get a quick check of quorum?
We just did a vote, which is. It showed fourteen people here.
We're solid, yeah, we're good. We have quorum. Alright, um, if there's no other discussion on this item, Ms. Harlos, if you'd like to take it to a roll call vote?
Was there an objection on it, making this amendment the main motion?
Is there an objection to this motion, is there objection to the amendment? Going once, going twice, going three times, it doesn't sound like there's any objection, so this motion is now the main motion. Uh, is there any discussion on this now main motion?
Okay, let me just put the language and, and Mr. Um, Malagon, um, I am going to need the recording tonight, if that's possible.
Uh, yes, that shouldn't be a problem, I'm sick.
Okay.
Okay, so he, oh, that's the wrong thing, that was the postpone one, hold on. I had the wrong thing on my clipboard. And every once in a while, it doesn't wanna. And every once in a while, it doesn't want to accept my clipboard, so I'll just do it right here. Uh comprised of, there we go.
All right, so I'm gonna read this again, uh just so we're on the same page. Appoint a special committee to investigate issues of conflict of interest and business practices of the Libertarian National Committee. Comprised of Mister Paul Dar, Mister Nikala, Mister Ware, Mister Garcia, Miss Yana Scavitch, Mister Redpath, Mister Bowen and Mister Neville. Is there any discussion on this item?
I had said I I had an amendment. Um I know. Um some folks. Uh I've I've gotten some commentary that they're they're not in favor of it, but I I am and I believe I owe it to the members to. Make the amendment if it gets shut down because they prefer the broader scope. Um so be it. Um I am moving to amend and I'm gonna put these words in bold. Specifically to include allegations and I want to make that clear that it's allegations. Of misconduct of the former chair. So it leaves it broad, but also specifically mentions what members are upset about. And I'm saying again, for the kenzillionth time, it's merely allegations at this point.
Is there a second to the Harlow's amendment?
Second.
Second by Miss Mister Thompson. Is there discussion on this amendment or is there any objection?
Um well, I I'm not gonna object. We can let it go to the vote, but I would like to.
We can we can discuss it. If there's if there's discussion, we can always discuss. Uh Mister Malagon and then Miss Yana Scavitch.
So I would encourage, I would encourage the L N C to vote this down, not because I just because. At least two members of the L N C have already been threatened with legal action, depending on how this potentially might be worded. One of those members could not be on this committee, even though they were very qualified to be on this committee because of those threats. And I think that we should just need to be as broad as possible, which gives the committee. A broad scope to uncover everything. I know that people are listening right now. I know there's a live stream going on somewhere or whatever. Just want to make it clear to everybody that we are committed to finding out everything that we possibly can. We don't want to get too specific. We want to make this as broad as possible because we don't know how many people are implicated. We don't know, we don't know the extent of any of this because we we don't know anything. The L N C was kept out of the loop. So we need to make this as broad as possible. My motion was worded the way that it was for a very specific reason. To give the special committee broad scope over everything and anything that may potentially be uncovered. Not specifically to one person. There could be multiple people. So I would encourage the L N C to vote it down for this reason. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Malagon. Uh Miss Yana Scavitch and then Mister Lamb. Miss Yana Scavitch.
I understand um where uh Miss Harlow's is coming from, but I actually see it the opposite way. I believe that having a more um general um uh not general, but broader scope. Of um a charging scope is beneficial in this case. Um there is absolutely, you know, I mean, speaking for myself and you you there's not going to be any um. Lack of looking at the issue at hand, um the freedom calls issue. I mean, certainly that's going to be done. Um you know, uh my experience in bureaucracies and doing investigations and reviews. Is a, you know, something that in Congress is, uh you know, quite frankly, you know. Um having a too limited scope, which is used to manipulate kind of the results and. I would like to, I I am fine with this scope. There will be a work plan that, you know, that's usually how these things go. There's a work plan that the entire committee agrees to. And it will, um my commitment is that it will cover all of the necessary issues that need to be reviewed. Um it's my intention to have this, you know, um. Fully investigated so that we can mitigate any issues for our audit, for our. Policies and for our donors to feel um reassured going forward.
Uh Mister Lamb.
Uh thank you, Mister Chairman Nikala. Again, I am a member of many caucuses and I would reiterate that. This complicates matters. The L N C needs to appoint. Uh committee that looks into everything that has gone on here. There must be party members that from outside the L N C involved in this investigation. And at some point, we will likely require the services of an outside forensic accountant. So I don't think we need to move forward at this point until that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. And then uh Miss Harlow's, you're next.
Yeah, I'm keeping it to the amendment, um which is really all that's, we're not yet on the main motion. I completely appreciate Mister Malagon's concerns. Um however. Uh it 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 leaves it broad. But it does reassure members we're going to look at this. I understand. The the threat. Um I I've seen them. However, when a report comes out. If it finds wrongdoing, that threat is still going to be there. There is absolutely nothing in here. Um that is, in my opinion, not a lawyer actionable. It says to investigate allegations. It is allegations and. Not to jog a past history, but like nobody had a problem saying I was unfit, but it was allegations. And committees find whatever they find. This is a normal motion. And we already had an I C motion that passed when our former chair was still the chair that named her. So I kept it broad. I didn't eliminate that and just make it recommendations. But want to assure members that we're looking into this. But again, I'm not I'm not looking to cause some kind of fight. I'm just really trying to represent the interests of members here, but I appreciate Mister Malagon's concerns because the threats were disturbing.
Thank you, Giddy.
All right, so. Uh if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Miss Harlow's.
Okay, one moment. Um. Want to close this. I do not like Zoom controls anymore. Um this will be the. Amendment for one moment.
Is there anything better than Zoom? Is Teams a good option?
No, Zoom actually does work better. I just am an old lady that likes to complain. Uh. Okay, Mister Boss.
No.
Mister Thompson.
Yes.
Mister Dar.
I'll pass for now.
Mister Dasing.
They know.
Mister Ford.
I'll abstain.
Mister Garcia.
Pass.
I am going to vote yes. Mister Malagon.
Apologies, uh Nate, for reasons stated.
Yes. Mister Lamb.
No.
Mister Chatterton, would that be your vote as well?
Correct.
Mister McGee.
No.
Mister Nana.
No.
Mister Redpath.
I'll abstain.
Mister Vincent. Mister Watkins. Mister Watkins. I think we've lost of Miss Yana Scavitch.
I'll vote no.
I'm gonna go back to Mister Watkins.
We lost him.
Okay, Mister Dar.
No.
Mister Garcia.
Abstain.
Hey, Mister Chair, one moment. Part of the problem is my mouse battery. Uh two yes, eight no, three express abstentions.
Roger, that did uh Mister Vincent vote or was?
He's not here. I just keep calling, calling on him in case he he comes back in. He dropped out at some point.
It's getting late on the East Coast, so. I could see why. All right, so the the motion did fail. So we're now on the main motion. And does anybody have any questions where we are, what we're doing? Uh Mister McGee.
If there's no objection, I'd like to call the question.
Is there a second to calling the question? All right. All right. So we'll go ahead and take this to a vote.
One second, I do. I knew that was coming up, so I actually had something already set up here. All right. Sec, Mister Boss.
Abstain.
Mister Dar.
Uh yes.
Mister Dasing.
Abstain.
Mister Ford.
Abstain.
Mister Garcia.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mister Malagon.
Aye.
Mister Lamb.
No.
Mister Chatterton, would that be your vote? One moment. Mister McGee.
Yes.
Mister Nana.
Yes.
Mister Redpath.
Yes.
Mister Benson. Mister Watkins. Miss Yana Scavitch.
Yes.
Uh did I not call Mister Thompson? Yes, I did not call Mister Thompson because this is a ballot I prepared ahead of time. Let me just, I'm gonna put you where, I'm gonna put you where Benson is for right now, since I already have that row. Mister Thompson.
Uh also, yes, please.
And did anyone pass? No. Okay, so Mister Chair, it is nine, one, three.
Motion passes. All right, so we we have a an investigatory committee. Um next item on the agenda is item number five, restore secretaries' access. Uh I'm gonna go ahead and rule this out of order and the reason being is because. Whatever past chair directives restricted the secretary's access, I'm I'm ruling out of order. And the reason for that. Is because we cannot overrule the J C. The J C makes a final decision. That decision is final. We are. Below the J C in terms of what we can and cannot do. So to that respect, um. Uh I will be working to restore the secretary's access. Now, as far as anything that may be considered legal with. The current lawsuit, uh I will be talking to counsel and I will be working with Mister Dar and Miss Harlow's. Uh to uh figure out what's best for the committee and uh. And take advice of counsel moving forward. So uh Mister Dar, I hope that's uh good for you.
That is satisfactory. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mister Dar. All right, next up is item six, amend. Mister Malagon.
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree with everything. I think we, a few of us need to connect offline in the next few days.
Yes.
Uh just because of the time constraint, I I'm fine. I'm just gonna, I'm just reading the room here. It seems people are dropping off and. We got the most important stuff that needed to be done, done. I would just go ahead and move to adjourn and we can do everything else via email. Uh from this point.
I'll second, I'll second that.
There is a motion to adjourn. There is an objection. Uh we could discuss it or we could just vote on it. It's up to how you guys. Want to proceed. So is there any?
Just go straight to a vote.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, actually, you're correct. All right, uh Miss Harlow's.
And Mister Chair, will you indulge me one moment?
Yes.
Um I'm amenable to that as well. I believe that you, me, Mister Malagon. And Mister Dar can work out these issues offline.
Certainly.
And if not, a motion could always come back up or whatever, but I I'm. I'm confident we can work it out, amenable to everybody. Okay, so now the motion to adjourn. Let me just start. Other ballot here. Rename it. I'm just gonna switch the votes as we go. Um Mister Boss.
He's already left.
Mister Dar.
Yes.
Mister Dasing. Is he gone? Is Mister Bracco here? Mister Ford.
Abstain.
Mister Garcia.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mister Malagon.
Aye.
Mister Lamb.
No.
Mister Chatterton, would that be your vote as well? Think he's gone. Mister McGee.
I'll vote yes.
Mister Nana.
Yep.
Mister Redpath.
Yes.
Mister Thompson.
Yes.
Mister Watkins. Mister Benson, just make sure. Okay, Miss Yana Scavitch. Did we lose Kathy?
Uh she's in the room.
I am here. Um I have a. Well. I have a question that I would like to ask before I uh before we adjourn and I am um unsure how to do that. Uh parliamentary wise.
Is it something that you want to ask before we close the room?
Yes.
Something, okay, so I guess I'll be a parliamentary inquiry. Um I guess we're, if everybody's amenable to that, if it's not something you're gonna motion, we can just.
No, it's just a, I I would just. Ask a question.
Okay, that's not a problem. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
So your vote?
Um so we can do that if the vote passes to adjourn?
We can, we can keep the room open. It wouldn't be in session. We would just be talking informally.
Okay, that's fine. I would just like to ask the board to, you know, to not leave. I will vote yes.
Hey, Mister Chair, nine, one, one.
Nine, one, one. It's, see, we're officially.
That will live in infamy.
I want to hear what Miss Yana Scavitch is gonna say before we all uh call it.
I would just like to inquire, I don't know if this is a question for the board or parli- or parliamentary. Tarians, um is Mister Nikala our chair or interim chair?
He's our chair.
Okay, um I I will note that the Libertarian Party tonight um just uh. Posted on X that he is our interim chair.
We'll we'll change that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
No problem.
Who who posted that?
It's the Libertarian Party. I don't know.
Who has access to that?
I'll find out who it is. Yeah.
Okay, um I will, just uh before we close out here, I'll go ahead and close the room, but I will, uh as soon as the cloud. Link recording is available, I will send that to Miss Harlow so that she can finish the minutes and we can transfer the bank accounts and do all that stuff. That's uh vital and important, so. Uh as soon as that's done, I will forward that email and and we'll get.
Cause I'm gonna do it on the train ride tomorrow morning. Uh and because there was just so many motions, I want to make sure I got everything and I couldn't label everything properly on the fly to. Without keeping people.
In the lookout. This was a longer meeting, so I suspected it'll probably be another twenty-five minutes to thirty minutes, but I'll be, I'll be checking my email and forward it.
Yeah, no worries, because I'm gonna do it tomorrow morning again on the train ride to and from work.
Uh board members, I I just want to say sincerely look forward to working with each and every one of you, as well as the respective committee. Uh uh chairman and whatever your needs are, whatever your concerns are, start thinking about it now. Uh we're gonna talk and uh. Uh we do have an executive committee meeting that I noticed.
For Tuesday, if Adrian could set that up while we're still working out all of these details with Zoom and stuff, if he could post the public notice. Um and if he could set that meeting up, because I know. However important that list of items is to me, I know Steve, you've got other things on your plate. As long as we can talk about it this week. That's fine with me. More towards the end of the week is fine with me. Um but Adrian will need to set that that meeting up.
Okay. Mister Malagon, take care of that. And then last, a little bit of housekeeping. I did rule out of order the honorary membership for. Uh Donald Trump. Uh it looks like it. Uh, it looks like it, there may be an appeal to the ruling of the chair, so I will let the board vote on whatever way you want to go with that, that's up to the board. Um, so, that's that, thank you guys, to late meeting, and, uh.
An appeal from the ruling of the chair will need as many sponsors as any motion, so it needs three sponsors. I'll, I'll note that in the thread, I'm sure they'll, they'll get that, and then, there will, there will be a vote on it. Um, in debate, I'll let everyone know, because members have already reached out to me, if the ruling of the chair is overturned, this is gonna end up in the JC. And we really, like, I hope we can resolve some of these JC issues that are coming up, to narrow the issues, or perhaps moot some appeals. Maybe not, that's fine.
For sure.
Um.
But you don't like JC appeals?
Uh, well, I don't think the JC likes JC appeals, um, I think they're hating life right now.
Turn for more than they signed up for, I think.
Well, we shouldn't be alone in that, so it's, uh, a misery.
Spread the, it's called spread the love, that's what it's.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair, congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, I will get all that out, uh, as soon as possible, probably before tonight, so be on the lookout.
Thank you, Paul, call me tomorrow.
And I'll, I'll get your ballot, um, Mr. Chair, started tonight, you just, I, I saw you did that so that the day, the first day is today, I'm gonna do that once we get off the call.
Excellent.
Good night, all.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.